Permit, if we were to submit a permit, we could place our own message boards out there for that. Much bigger, I guess, scheme than that. Sheriff and I have talked about the kind of three lane situation you have going through there and how that does give some confusion. End of this month, we're having a multidisciplinary safety team meeting between the sheriff, myself, the DOT, the cities involved, city individuals involved with that. That's gonna be one of the topics we're gonna discuss. So just kinda kick off that discussion with the DOT to see if there can be some revisions made through the, you know, with that turn lane through there and, you know, especially with Schuler Heights Road as well. There's just, you know, maybe some concepts we could take a look at improving through there, but that's gonna take some time to work out. But I guess immediately, you know, we can go out and put some message boards out there. I would like the board's opinion on it, if we should do that. You know, it's not something we typically do for, you know, businesses. We've done it for events, you know, like races and things like that, but we haven't specifically put out message boards for a business per se, that I'm aware of. And then we, if we were to do that, what kind of messaging would we wanna see on that, you know?
At all is?
Not that I'm aware of. I know Sheriff Kennedy has had, had conversation with the business owners and I think they're, they're trying to, you know, get people to come into their, or make improvements in their grounds to get people there. But you're still gonna always have people parking that white shoulder and, you know, it just gets out of their control. So I don't know if the business has actually made a request. It's just come up and topped the conversation with us here. You know, what could we do differently there? I think that's the only thing I could think of that, to draw attention to that area, is to get a message board out there stating, hey, slowdown caution, there's, there's an event happening up there.
Watching people cross the street, had cars fly by 60 miles an hour on a curb, yeah, with little kids, it's not worth it, you know?
It's definitely a location issue, it's on a curb and...
They do fly by there. I mean, I understand one part of it. Obviously, you do it for one business and all of a sudden you're opening a can of worms and you're gonna need full-time employees just to keep moving signs around. But I think this is a special circumstance where the location and the large number of people that are there, that I think it would be beneficial to get the signs out there to try to get people to slow down.
Yeah. The only other thing that crossed my mind that we could do, and it doesn't technically enforce a closure of the shoulder area, but it kinda does, is to put cones out there. To cone that entire shoulder line that kinda, kinda keeps, kinda keeps people from wanting to park in there.
I would eliminate the crossing of the road.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I would do. You know, you can put the slowdown signs, but, you know, the problem is they're crossing large areas of traffic without any crosswalks or things. So whether it's a patrol car or cones or something, you wanna stop people parking on the other side.
Well, citizens have said to me, we know someone's going to be hurt and killed there, and it probably will be a child. So I think the proactive approach, we've, we're all kinda nodding our heads here in the room, even, yeah, it's bad. I, I'm so happy for the orchard that they have success, that's wonderful. But we have to help them control the situation so that we're doing what we can. Because now cars are parking, I think, on both sides of the white shoulder. So they're crossing the road. If you can't get them to stop on one side of the shoulder, how can you do the other? They can go to Schuler Heights Road, then they're crossing the road to cross the road. So it's, it just isn't designed for this. You know, in the spring I had an idea, we would maybe help them look at a bigger parking lot, but we now have a culture of parking on the side of the highway and dashing. I mean, the kids are racing, there's blowups for their festivals, there's a lot of excitement to draw the children in. You know, we've all been contacted by at least one individual, and I know that same weekend, so last weekend, I got reports of two near misses. I said, I think you should call nine emergency dispatch. We should report it all. So we know how many times people are having to suddenly brake to avoid an accident or swerve to avoid an accident. And then there's been car beeps and that makes the children more frustrated and then they're not looking, they're just trying to get out of wherever they are. So I think message boards, certainly we can work with the business owner, but we need to, I think, continue to step up what we're doing.
Okay. I, I personally would like to see some action this week. I would like to go back to the DOT yet today and start this permit process and post those message boards out there to make it public where. I do have a little concern about those cones, that, you know, if they can't park on the shoulder, which I don't want to park on the shoulder, where else are they gonna go? Where else are they gonna try to go? If there's not enough space inside the Apple Orchard grounds, they're, they're gonna try somewhere else. So I don't know what that's gonna cause, I guess.
I'd like to explore with them if, if there is a solution that we can help them with. Is there the availability of more off-site parking?
Yeah, that I don't know.
I'll go back to my first comment, you know, our question was, are the business owners requesting this and are they engaged? I think they have to be. So that's what I would recommend, is you, you have to engage the business owner because it's, you know, their business that is causing these issues that we're concerned about. And so they need to be part of the solution. It's not new. It happens quite often in other businesses. We've all traveled, we've all seen that. Dubuque is less congested, but you go to any event somewhere in other cities and you see both private and public cooperation to solve traffic issues, make it more safe.
Yep.
But this would be like the 10th time we've talked about this and I've never, ever had any representative from the business here or involved in discussion. And I think that needs to change.
It would be nice if we could have them here to give us an idea of their current grounds and what they plan for improvements on their grounds. You know, I just don't have any concept for that. You know, here we're, I'm trying to make some proactive improvements on the actual highway, but what's going on outside the highway, you know, limits, that's, it would be nice to know. But if the board wishes, I can proceed with placing those message boards. Try to get that done yet this week.
I'm definitely in favor of getting the message boards up, but I'm also with Jay that the owners need to step up to the plate here too and try to help. Maybe, maybe they're just sitting back hoping we're gonna do something because they don't own the highway. Well, we don't own the highway either, but we still have to do something to keep people safe. I mean, it's, it's a bad area.
We don't have the sheriff with us today. I, I understand from previous conversations, he has talked to the, to the landowner, the business owner. So, you know, my, my, my mindset is, there's going to be a tragedy there. And then we'll all have other solutions, because we will have to have other solutions. But we see that right now as trouble brewing. We know, we know there'll be an event. So what, what can we do now to try to avert that? Thank you for...
Again, you know, we're trying to make, we're gonna start the discussion on possibly making some revisions to the traffic lanes through there. So that will be occurring this month, but that's gonna be for future years. So, you know, I guess for now, the message boards is a, is a good first step, at least make the public aware of those curves.
Do you have enough direction to go on?
I think so, yeah. Okay. I guess, does the board have any other questions for me on anything?
I don't have anything.
I have one. In past years, we've done kind of a snow meeting where we get the different stakeholders from school districts, small towns, and certainly our county operators and you involved. Not necessarily requesting that, but what brings to mind is that if we're going to attempt to roll out the application that one tracks the progress and views of various roads on our operators' vehicles, how are we gonna educate and roll that out to those pros and then the public as well?
Good question. Well, I think, you know, to start with, Nate and I are planning, I think the first, sometime in November, I believe, Dawn, I believe, Dickie scheduled a work session for us, but we are planning our presentation with the board on that system itself. And I think typically in November, we, in the past years, we have invited the, the schools, you know, I can't remember what other entities, but to come and have a snow meeting to discuss those things. So we can certainly do that after having that, that first meeting.
Not necessarily my request to do that, if you think that's good and valuable, move forward with that meeting, but I think, you know, we have a new application, we've got new technology, we've got new visibility that we'll have on our roadways, and so we, we don't wanna hide that, we wanna share that. So what's the plan to share that and educate people, both the public and those professionals? But I think now we'll have a, a better view than ever to determine whether they should have or not have school or delay school and even other, you know, members of the public, whether they should travel into Dubuque, so to speak.
Well, I would say, you know, as far as the general public, we would use the press to send out information on a, here's, here's a new application that could be used to track plows. You know, so we could, we could do several press releases for that kind of thing. As far as having, you know, a connection or communication with the, the school superintendents or the, the transportation managers, we're already in direct contact with those people. So we can, you know, make those contacts, say, hey, here, we've got a new system you can use. We're often talking to the schools, you know, through the snow season, so we can do that ahead of time as well.
Good, thank you.
Anything more, Anthony?
Yes, all have.
Good. Wish to make a motion to recess until 9:00 AM?
You're sure, and I will second that.
Motion to second to recess until 9:00 AM, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks, Anthony.
Good morning, it's 9:00 AM and we'll bring the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors into session. It's Monday, October 4th at 9:00 AM. We will begin the agenda with a moment for individuals to comment in public session. And if you are in the virtual world, you can raise your hand in the reactions. If you are in the room and you wish to address the board, please go to the podium, state your name and address. And we'll hold for a moment to see if anyone in the virtual world would like to come. Okay, moving on on our agenda, we have a proclamation this morning for brain health awareness. Our Director of Disability Services, Dr. Anne Cameron Williams is with us and has agreed to read the proposed proclamation. Good morning, Anne.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for letting me read this proclamation. It is, October is Brain Health Awareness Month, and so I'm delighted to have the signed proclamation by the Board of Supervisors for this. And I will be brief. Proclamation, Brain Health Awareness Month. If I can see it. Whereas, brain health is critical to everyone's well-being. And whereas, the brain is an organ susceptible to disease and disorder. And whereas, awareness and education is pivotal to ending the stigma surrounding mental illness. And whereas, brain health issues are real and prevalent in our county and in the east central region. And whereas, with effective education and treatment, those individuals with brain health issues and all who support them can work together for recovery in an environment free of stigma. Now therefore, the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the staff and citizens of Dubuque County, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Brain Health Awareness Month. Proclamation adopted this fourth day of October 2021.
Anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
And I will second that.
Motion is second to approve the proclamation, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our September 27th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Yeah, I will second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. We have two consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the WC and wine permit for Sunset Ridge Winery. And for the LC liquor license for Harvey's Airline Inn.
And I will second that.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. We do not have any procurement procedures, nor do we have public hearings or any plat for approval. We move to Section 7, which are action items. And Dawn has our first resolution up on our screen sharing. Does anyone have questions or wish to make any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring for Sunnycrest.
I will second that.
Motion is second to approve the resolution, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. The next resolution concerns the annual urban renewal report for Department of Management. I appreciate very much that our auditor sent that to us midweek with opportunity to get any education. Do we have any questions for him, he's in the room today?
I have nothing. I'd make a motion to approve the annual urban renewal report.
And I will second that.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next is the resolution to approve the financial institutions for depositories of Dubuque County funds. We happen to have with us our elected county treasurer, good morning. Is there anyone here who wishes to have any comment or question about the depository selection? If not, looking for a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Next is the resolution concerning the 28E agreement with Delaware County for shared license surveyor position.
I have a couple of questions on this.
Anthony, can I invite you to the podium, our county engineer will join us.
I have three questions, so I'll just shoot them out and then we can address them as we need to. One, has Delaware County approved the agreement? Two, is it, is it common or does it make sense to include names of people in an agreement like this? And then, three, do we have a proposed wage for this position? That's kind of what I'm looking to gain some clarity on.
I guess I can cover the first question. Delaware County has not approved it yet. Um, we, we're going to schedule it for last Monday. Um, when Delaware County's meeting was before the, the night meeting, I believe, uh, yeah, night meeting. So we were going to try to get both, you know, boards approving it to the same, on the same day. Um, but we still needed more review on the, on the agreement, so it got kicked over to today. Um, and actually Delaware County is not meeting today, they're not having a meeting, so they won't look at this until next Monday. As far as the rest of questions, do you want to take that, Dawn?
Yep, so we mirrored this one off of the other two 28E agreements with the county engineer and the assistant county engineer. And both of those did include names. Um, our county attorney did review it and saw no issue for approval.
So my question on that would be then, so if any of the named individuals in those agreements would no longer be part of that agreement, the agreement would go away?
Yeah, I think we most likely want a new 28E agreement.
Yeah, and so it really is a specific named person that we're agreeing to, not necessarily the concept of.
That position.
I would reverse that, I love the people that are named in there, don't get me wrong. But I think it's the partnering that is first and foremost. And then obviously, key personnel that are included, um, you know, are very important as well. But, you know, it's the concept of partnering and lowering costs between the two governments that is, I think, at the core of the agreement. So that's just one thing we can consider and not worried about it necessarily in this, this agreement. And then the proposed wage, do we have a proposed wage for this position?
The proposed wage was, is $105,000 for this year. And then any subsequent wage increases would be subject to your approval through resolution or an additional, continue on the 28E agreement, because the 28E is just for one year.
And when will we see that proposed wage and/or the documents related to the change in that wage?
That would be just an internal change form because he's our employee, so there's really no agreement. I mean, there was discussion at the work session, but it would be an employment letter with the agree, uh, with the employee.
I would like to see that come to the board, that would be my request, if either of my colleagues support that. Uh, I would, would like to see that come to the board. I think we had a lot of discussion and concern relate, well, I mean, not concerned, a lot of discussion related to the wage piece.
We can do that for next week. We can do that ready.
And what is the current wage for this position?
I would have to look him up, I want it in the eighties, 82,000, I believe.
The current position is a part-time.
Is a 32-hour position, correct.
Yeah, if you take them within 40 hours, I think it proportions up to about 86, I think, right around there.
I would agree with Supervisor Whitman, I'd like to see the pay before us formally. I think it helps keep the history of the actions where it's more transparent of people. You could put that even in the reason the increase is due to shared time with Delaware County or something. So that, just so it reflects back of, as to the why.
We can present that for next week.
Did anyone have, um, I mean, are we good with this, do we want changes to the 28E agreement?
It's basically for a year, so I guess we could leave the name and everything the way it is. And if we decide to extend it out, we can change it at that time or whatever. So I, I don't see no need, any need to change the agreement at this time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the agreement as, as presented right now. I just think maybe we should consider the, the language in that because if it's the concept of partnering, um, you know, there is turnover and life changes, and so maybe it's not necessarily called out by name. The other thing I will comment on is I was, you know, questioning along with some of my other board colleagues at the wage. And if you look at the 30 hours versus, let's just say, 40 hours at full time, um, they're, they're pretty close. So you're, you're, you're at that $50 an hour range. And so I'm comfortable with that and I'm glad we were able to, to meet that.
The reason I, I think that it's particular to individuals is because it is intended to be particular to individuals. It is someone that we think their skills and the way the agreement is being formed allow it to be a shared person. And so that it's specific to a person, and if someone's life circumstances change, then this agreement would fail. And, and we might all be okay with that because it is particular to someone who we expect is going to be able to handle the shared role well. So that's why I think it's not a typical agreement, I would agree with you, Jay, but it's intended to be for, it, it, this person for one year. And that's the way I think the Board of, in Delaware County is comfortable. They want to see if that person's a good fit to do the right job. So, um, might not be best practice overall, but it, it is drafted to fit this need for this position.
I, I would certainly also be more comfortable if Delaware County approved it first. It was their request that came to us, and I think that's the, the proper order. Um, so I would, I'd be looking to, to table that, but that's just my, my preference.
If we did that, then we'd have to have Delaware County approve it next Monday. Um, and that meeting would come after your, your meeting in the morning, so we'd have to wait two weeks then for it to come back here then.
Just my preference of kind of how typical contracts and agreements, you know, their, their request. And I want to make sure they're comfortable with it, there is still review and change in the language, and that's why they didn't agree the previous week. And so I would want to make sure they are comfortable with the agreement. And I fully anticipate supporting it, but it's more of a, it's not necessarily a hurdle to jump, but it's more of a courtesy that I want you to be comfortable with it first.
I do agree with you, I think the protocol is that it should probably come from them first and then us, you know, on Dubuque countryside second or last. Um, and that's what I was hoping to achieve last week, but it just, the time we didn't.
Because we already have a surveyor, and we have this surveyor, and he's very good, and he's providing Dubuque County a wonderful service.
Yes.
And now this agreement extends that to Delaware County.
Yes.
And so the citizens of Dubuque County may receive a small reduction in cost, but the service is still the same.
Yeah.
And they'll give us a time also to have a formal action on the wage increase, so they'll be well together. We obviously meet every week, so, um, you'll be back with us in two weeks anyway, right?
Yes, I will.
Okay, so I guess we're looking for a, a motion to table?
I'll make that motion to table the resolution.
I will second.
Uh, motion is second to table the resolution for two weeks, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Anthony, thank you for being here to clarify that. Next we have a resolution to approve a drug grant extension for methamphetamine.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for the drug grant.
And I will second that.
Motion is second to approve a resolution, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next item is a resolution also to approve a grant extension, this is the anti-heroin grant.
I will make a motion to approve the anti-heroin grant extension.
And I will second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Uh, we move on to communications, and the first is our notice from Treasurer Sherman, and he has left.
The timing is terrible. I swear, I just saw him here.
He was just here and he stepped out.
I will make a motion to receive and file.
I will second.
Motion is second to receive and file, all in favor say aye.
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 And I would also like to congratulate him on his wonderful service for, for Dubuque County. I wish he was here to, to see this, but I'm sure he's probably either watching the recording or plans to watch that with a bowl of popcorn and a soda tonight, um, once he's off work. But tremendous contribution and steady effort, uh, running the treasurer's office for many years.
I would echo those sentiments for his dedication for the, what do you have, 28 years, I believe?
A lot.
Of, for running the treasurer's office.
A lot of license plates.
A lot of license plates.
Lot of tax, lot of tax discussion.
Yes.
He personally has installed several of those license plates too, for some of our seniors. So, um, just a, I think a, a moment to pause and note, we will direct this to Dawn Sherman and to, um, our auditor to begin the process and let us know whatever that is. So it'll come back to us soon for some, some direction or plan.
Yeah, I would soon along with counsel for the county attorney, if needed, related to what our steps are.
Did we do the receive and file?
We did, yes.
And we voted?
We did, yes.
All right, thank you.
Then we just, then we kept talking.
All right, next is the watershed semi-annual meeting notes. Um, I guess we're going to officially file those, anyone wish to make a motion?
I thought it was a wonderful meeting, and I will make a motion to receive and file. And I appreciate all the coordination from, from the groups.
I will second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And the last is a mineral management plan, anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
And I will second that.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, next we have appointments. Dawn, did you believe we should take action now? I know you have a work session with us about diversity, equity and inclusion.
I think you can take action now, they, they are, um, under the, the same diversity, equity and inclusion program. But, um, I don't see any need to, um, table this for, for the discussion during that session.
Okay.
Would be approving the two applications, one for McQuell Jackson and one for Shawn Johnson, right?
Correct.
Are there any preferences related to the terms at all that you're aware of?
Yep, they're all three-year terms. Um, I would, you know, the farther out we can, I think it's always great to, to give them time. So it'd be the 6/30 of 2024.
Okay. That's, I'll, so I'll make a motion to appoint Mikel Jackson and Shawn Johnson both to this committee with a term ending on June 30th, 2024.
I will second that.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Dawn, would they be able to work with Anderson Sanchi with the city to get maybe up and running? He's got, he does their version equity and inclusion.
And Mikel and I have met, um, with, um, the, the staff over there, Kelly Larson and, um, and others and her staff of what services they offer, what, how their department developed when they started that. So we can, we'll definitely reach out to them, um.
But Anthony had reached out to see if the county would be interested in working with the city in that aspect.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
And we'll reach out to them, thank you.
Next on the agenda are personnel requisitions, and we do not have any. This concludes the formal meeting for the Board of Supervisors, and we go to opportunity for public comment. If anyone wishes to address the board, on Zoom you will raise your hand in the reactions function on the bottom of your screen. And if you're here personally, you can address the board by going to the podium, saying your name and address. We'll pause a moment to see if anyone wishes to discuss, uh, bring to our attention something that is of concern.
With no hands raised, I will make a motion to recess till 9:30.
I will second.
Motion is second to recess until 9:30, we'll begin again with the work session regarding COVID update. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries, thank you. Thank you. Nine thirty, we'll come back in session. We are scheduled for a COVID update. I don't believe, there's Patrice here in the room. She'd like to come forward. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. And Don, thank you, Don. Samantha had put in our Friday update a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm just going to go over that briefly. Just add a few more things and then we will address any questions that you may have. Stacy is not available today and I don't know if Tom Berger is on the Zoom or not. So with that, hmm, tell me. So without, we can go ahead and get started. This is just an example of all of our COVID cases over time. As you can even look at, a year ago in September, we were getting up there, but we had not seen our climb in the cases, obviously, until November, December. But where we're at now, we still have that climb going on in September. But you'll see that we are, we're hoping that we hit the peak, but we don't know that at all. But we are starting to see a decline in the positive cases. So we're just hoping, hoping that people will go in and get those needed vaccinations and do those social medications to help us bring that climb back down. And then the next slide is a comparison of the COVID cases, which is going to show you last year, one month of the, I'm sorry, from October first to this October first. Where we were a year ago, we had three thousand five hundred ninety-eight total cases. To where we are on Friday, we had fifteen thousand ninety-nine total cases. And as you can see by that blue line, we definitely did have an acceleration with our positive cases over the past year. And the next slide, this is the COVID cases by age. On the left-hand side, that is all of the cases that we have had since we've started the pandemic. Now interestingly enough, if you look on the left-hand side, we're just focusing in on that zero to ten-year age with a child. We basically only had five percent of that age group that had the positive cases. But if you look in the box area, you will see that zero to seventeen. This is our last seven days. That is still our age range that we are watching closely now. And as you can see, that's twenty-one percent of our positive cases. And then the next slide, again, we were looking at what the comparison was for one month from last year, September first to October first. Again, if you look at a year ago, that zero to ten-year age range, we were at the three percent. It was mainly our five years to eighteen was the ten percent, but it was really that nineteen to twenty-four-year-old age range that we were really concerned about a year ago. And then the next slide shows the same information, but a year later, September first to October first. And you can see on the bottom where that zero to ten-year age range is catching up with. Just wanted to show the variance. As you know, the Delta has been the majority of the variance across the state of Iowa. We have started to see a decline in the Delta variant. Iowa. And here's look at for the month of. Know that with all of our eligible population in Dubuque County, we have sixty-nine point three percent of our eligible population that have either started the vaccine or completed the series. We've had ninety-three point four percent of the sixty-five and older populations that have either started or completed the vaccinations. We know that the FDA and the ASAP are talking about looking at, well, they have approved, I'm sorry, I need to step back. They have approved that third dose booster for the Pfizer. We know that they're looking at the Moderna as well. And we're hoping within two weeks, we will get the green light to be able to give anyone who had the Moderna the third dose booster very, very soon. We also know that the FDA and the ASAP are looking at studies for a vaccine for that five to eleven-year age range. And we're hoping that FDA and the ASAP will be able to give us guidance and that green light to be able to start doing those vaccinations in that age population, hopefully even before Thanksgiving. But right now, we know that Pfizer has been given the green light and third dose booster, and that is what we're concentrating.
Can I just have you stop for a minute? We're getting comments that no one online can hear you. So let's see if we can pause a minute and fix that. If there's something that we're not doing right or do our systems appear to be working?
Okay, can you hear me now coming in and out? Got it. Okay, I will stay as stiff as I can and talk forward. Okay, so we are looking at optimistically the approval with the Moderna for the third dose booster as well as approval for that five to eleven-year age range. Hi, Don. Again, I just commented briefly that we are concentrating on that third dose booster for the Pfizer. Now, we do know that people that are, that have received the Pfizer, and if they are six months out from their prime and their booster, really after that booster, then they are eligible for that third dose booster. And there's also criteria with that. And part of the criteria is that people fifty to sixty-four years of age that have underlying medical conditions are eligible. People that are eighteen to forty-nine years of age with underlying medical conditions are also eligible. And then people eighteen to sixty-four who are at an increased risk of COVID at exposure or transmission because of their occupational or institutional setting are eligible for this as well. Now Stacy did report that we did have a clinic on Friday, or I'm sorry, on Thursday of last week out at the Training Center. And she did administer seventy-five vaccinations. All but two were that third dose booster. And then on Friday at the VNA, she administered a hundred and forty-two vaccines. And then at the festival over the weekend, she administered eight. And we do have quite a few, well, actually four future vaccine clinics coming up this week. Monday, actually today, from four to seven, we're having a clinic at the VNA. On Thursday and Friday, we are having clinics out at the Training Center. And I did also want to mention with the Training Center, we did open that up for a pod. And we chose that site because of a lot of things. Less expensive because we have the internet in place, we have the parking in place, we have the space available with the Bay Area. Tom Berger has been wonderful in helping set up the stations out there. We do also know, talking with our medical healthcare providers, that right now they're able to maintain the population that they are administering the vaccines to in their own offices. But again, if the FDA and the ASAP start approving additional vaccines, they have already told us that they're going to be moving out to the Training Center if everything comes to be at the same time. So we are up and running out there. And I was over there on Thursday during the clinic and it ran very, very smoothly. So we're very pleased with that. And then also lastly, I just wanted to mention with our testing committee, they have informed us, because we know how testing is so very, very important with the COVID pandemic, it goes along with everything, that their supplies for testing are starting to come in. We do know. We do know that they did have a shortage and they were slow in getting their supplies needed for testing, but they are getting caught up with that as well. And Dawn, I think that's our last one. Okay. So, any questions or any concerns or anything additional that you would like?
Does anyone have any questions for Patrice?
I don't have anything.
You're not? Thank you so much.
Very much. Have a good week.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for a very brief recess until 9:45.
No move. All right, one second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Good.
Aye, we are in recess for just a few minutes here until 9:45. Four minutes.
Work session with, um, our zoning administrator, Tammy Henry, regarding, um, that trailer park. Good morning Tammy, how are you feeling?
Well, you know what, sitting here with the leg up.
I appreciate you being here, so we'll, we'll, go ahead, we'll try to be concise.
Okay, so, um, I'm just bringing up an update here for Amy Knapp and the mobile home park. And, um, at some point, I know Amy was going to join in, so I don't know. Amy, are you there? It looks like she is 1563 or 905 there. Looks like maybe she tried to talk. So I'm going to go ahead and give you an update. And I know that Amy wants to, you know, um, have input and conversation with you as all, as well. Okay, so, um, the update is to tell you what's been going on with the mobile home park. You know, I met with Ms. Knapp on the property and walked through to see what progress has been made in the park. We also talked about what she's, you know, with the mobile home park. Ms. Knapp explained to me that she's trying to sell the park hopefully within the next year. Um, Ms. Knapp also stated that she's had some contacts, you know, about buying the property, but she doesn't have anything in writing or, or solid yet from anybody. Um, Ms. Knapp said that she's working with the DNR on Septic and Well compliance and that, um, she was having some issues there, but I'll let Amy explain that when she talks. Um, she feels that she's met all the requirements that the county board of supervisors asked her to do. She stated that, you know, at one time this mobile home park had 40 lots and now she's down to 11 mobile homes in it. Um, she would like to discuss the road access again to see what she can do to clear this up and get the property ready for sale. You know, as you can see, I provided for you a picture of the mobile homes that remain and some of the areas, you know, of what the property is looking like. Um, so again, she's down to 11 mobile homes and, um, she would like to have the discussion, as you'll recall, going back on the access for the county. And then there's other issues out there going on. But, um, again, Amy wants to have some discussion with you and I'm open for any questions now, if you have anything for me. And you, into your packets, you've gotten pictures to see the progress that was made as well. So Amy, are you on and would you like to speak? I know that she was going to try to attend, but I do see this 1563 905, looks like their mic is open. I'm wondering if, if I'm not hearing her, if you're hearing her?
No, Tammy, that, this is on the 905 is the boardroom. If anybody is on by phone, they can unmute themselves by pressing star six. Hello? Oh, here we go. Sorry, I didn't know that.
Thanks, Amy.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. Um, well, I guess, I mean.
Could I, is this Amy Knapp? Can you just identify yourself?
Yes, this is Amy Knapp.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, the request was, you guys, last request was for me to remove those mobile homes and I've completed that request. So I'd like to talk about the road that has run through the mobile home parks as long as my parents have owned it, which is, I think, since the mid-sixties. Um, we've used the road for, I guess, 50 years. So I don't know, I don't know why you guys wouldn't want to transfer it to me. Um, I guess that's the question, right? At one point you said, sure, no problem, but it's been five years. So it would be much easier to sell the property with that, uh, road transferred to my name. And I know I can file suit against you guys or the county, I guess, to transfer title, but I'd rather not do that. I'd rather, you know, since I've been maintaining it and we've been using it and half of the road as it is marked is, has infrastructure for mobile homes, I'd like to get that transferred into my name so that I can go ahead and sell the property. I don't know what else you want to hear from me, so I guess I'll let you guys decide what's going on.
And if I may, I'm going to, I'm going to speak up here again. And Amy, you and I had a conversation about sale and, um, uh, I know that I've spoken with Anthony and Brian about, Preston, about access here eventually for access to the trail, addition to the trail, about potential, this is Zone C1, about potential park issues and things. And Amy and I talked about that and Amy was not, um, objective to having a conversation with the county about, would the county be interested at some point in this property? And again, I had some conversation with Anthony and Brian, Preston, and they both had, um, expressed some potential interest in this property as well. And I don't know if, um, if Anthony's still in the room out there or not.
Well, I'm just going to interject as the chair. The agenda does not say this discussion is going to be about real estate purchase. This real estate, this is discussion about road vacation request. So I'd like to make sure that we're discussing vacating the road and, and do we have a formal request? Maybe inviting the county engineer to back to the podium to kind of tell us about the road and who's been maintaining and if you could address that further.
Well, as far as the road easement, um, that is still a county easement as far as I'm concerned or understand, I don't think it's, it's, uh.
It's not an easement. It's not an easement. It was transferred, it was a deed. If, that was made clear by the first engineer who looked at the, it's an actual deed transferring title to the road to the county. If you would like me to trans, to email you copies of the deed, I have that in my abstract materials. So it's not.
That'd be great, I'd love to see that.
It's not as easy as an easement. That was made clear the first time we went around with this five years ago. It's not that easy. It's a title that transferred the road to the county. And I'm surprised you guys.
Okay, if it's a title, then it makes it mu, it makes it much more difficult because then we have to go through kind of an auction procedure on, on selling that ground. You just, there's procedures, different procedures to that versus vacating an easement.
I know, which is why, I've been on this for five years. I don't know how it got lost on your end. But if I've been maintaining the road, which I have for the last five years and there's mobile home park infrastructure that has been installed on a portion of the road, I don't know how you could manage to auction off my property. So if you'd like me to file suit, I can do that.
Amy?
I would have.
This is.
Yeah.
Chair Ann McDonough again, I, I think that this is, I understand you have made this request before and this is the first conversation about this at this time. So we'll have to dig further and get, um, County Attorney May is here in the room. We'll probably have to, you know, do a little more workup on our end. I don't, I don't want you to be upset about that.
Well, he was involved five years ago.
Okay, so maybe you'll even come to the podium.
Somebody should have notes. And I was told the engineer had a full report on it and presented the report to you guys, so that's not true? I mean, I've been playing this game with you guys where it's, do this and then we'll consider your request. Do that and then we'll consider your request. And so now that I've done everything that you've requested so far, I'd like some kind of, I'd like some feedback on this. Meaningful feedback.
Okay, let us know when you're, when you're quiet, you'll get some feedback. But, but it's not my meeting. I'm, I've got comments, but, uh, let me know when you're ready.
Amy, is there anything else you want to say before we, we have some board discussion?
Nope.
So let's come back to the board then. Did we have questions of our administrative, um, our zoning administrator? Do we have questions for engineer? Do you want to have comments here? Where are we?
Yes and yes. Um, so Dawn, I'm not sure if you have the slides as well. Um, so this is, this is Supervisor Jay Wickham, uh, for, for those on the phone. Um, and actually I live in, in that neighborhood, so I drive by this location quite often. And, uh, significant progress has, has been made. In fact, you're on the first slide, slide number six, um, I believe. Uh, I've got a few notes, is, is really good. So that, that slide showing, which was numerous locations for, stay on number six, please.
Oh, sorry, number six.
Not, not trailer six.
Is this the slide?
Slide number six, the first one you had up. Significant improvement has been made in the slide that we're showing in the courtroom to our courthouse today, shows that. So a lot of good, good improvements. And it took a while and I know that's not free, so I appreciate, uh, you spending time and money to, to clean that up. So, so that area, as you look at that individual area, at one point was full of abandoned property and people were scavenging through rumble to find the last pickings. And occasionally there is even some smoldering fire. But cleaned, cleaned up and, and looks, looks really good. So that's, uh, kind of one of the, the good news and good, good starts to this. Um, so, so appreciate that effort. The only, uh, as I've thought through it, the only area that I would see any potential county interest is, is maybe a safety issue. And I think it's on slide either like 15 or 17. And so the one, one pad, uh, that kind of closes to the road right around the corner, um, I believe causes a sight distance around the corner. And with the heavy traffic volume at John Deere, that's, that's my only concern related to, to safety. Um, but, but other than that, generally speaking, and then that's the slide I'm referring to, is you look off to the left, that ground has been elevated in a pad, basically for a trailer pad. And there was a blue trailer there for quite a few years and that also has been removed and then that area looks, looks good now. But, uh, that elevation and/or locating another trailer there continues to impede the sight distance around that curve, which is tight. And then obviously you've got the intersection related to Riverside Road and then you've got the access point that John Deere uses for trucks. And so a lot of stuff going around that corner. In addition to that actually being an accidents point for the trailer park. So a lot of, a lot of stuff going on that corner. And so that would be the only, um, my vantage point is that would be something that we should consider, the county should, um, to level that and potentially make that part of the right of way. That's, that's my kind of only vantage point. Um, the rest of it, you know, I, I certainly would be supportive of, of mobile home trailer parks and, and housing in that area. I think it's, it's needing, we need more houses. And so, uh, I wouldn't be looking to stand any progress. But that's one area that I, I think we'd want to have more discussion on.
How does that relate to her request to, um, if it's the vacation of a road or?
It's, that's exactly the location.
No, actually it's not. That's my property. I own that property.
Well, I'm sure there's right of way up to some, some point, but, uh, you know, I don't.
Sure.
Claim to contend, but that, that's my comment. So you asked and that was, that was my comments to the board and to you.
Amy, this is.
Go ahead, Harley.
Amy, this is Supervisor Putoff. Are you referring to the, uh, section that ran up towards like, uh, I guess, the upper 30s? I'm kind of confused here, just to clarify.
Okay, if you look, if you look on the, the materials provided by Tammy, there are several overhead views of the parcels. And you can see where there's a large parcel that includes the bluff. And then there's a smaller slice that sits along the new Peru, Peru Road. And then you'll also see there's a carve out between the smaller slice and the larger parcel. Do you see that on the map?
Okay, I see that now, yeah.
That's the road that was deeded to the county. That's old Peru Road. When new Peru Road was put in, nobody changed anything. And when, when the, the county or the state redid the maps using GIS, they found that there were these slices of parcels and the Behlow folks have a, a portion that's on, you know what I mean? The, there's a little square carve out for the Behlows. The new county, the new Peru Road bisected their property there. So. I own, the old, the old road was abandoned so long ago that the mobile homes, what the prior, um, board member was talking about, num, slide number six, that's actually where the road goes. So for 50-some years, there were mobile homes sitting on the old Peru Road, but I've. So for fifty-some years, there were mobile homes sitting on the old Peru Road, but I've since removed all those mobile homes, but the infrastructure is there. And so the carve out was abandoned by the county, but never re-deeded or re, or sold or whatever to the people running the mobile home park. So now that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about that portion of the road that has popped up in between the new Peru Road and my property.
I understand what you're talking about now.
It only involves, yeah.
I've spent a lot of time out there over the years, and the lot that Supervisor Wickham was talking about, I believe was Lot Forty. Matter of fact, I'm just about certain of that because I spent enough time out there over the years that it was Lot Forty.
Yeah, right. And that would be part of my property and part of the Behlows' property.
Right.
Since there's that carve out.
Okay, I think I have what, the, adjusted what you're talking about now. I guess I didn't realize that was the old road that. I wouldn't think that should be an issue to turn over.
I'd like to fully understand what the county engineer has ideas. You know, I, we've spent, well, federal government and county spending roughly a lot of millions and millions on the other side for safety. Right now, there's no, no considerations for, for this area, which has a pretty high traffic count twice a day when things go in and out. And we also get trucks backing up. So I would, would love to have a review of this area for, for safety to see how it can coexist with the trailer park.
Okay.
So there are two things that you kind of alluded to there that I would like to see make, make improvements to. One is the site distance, whether that be a kind of a realignment or just open up the site and be able to see around the curve there. The other thing is the backing up of the trucks on the, on the Peru Road there. They kind of parked half on the shoulder and half on the road. It's a, an open situation where, and what they're doing is the, the freight trucks for, for John Deere are sitting there waiting to get into, into the facility. So in times you have a line of trucks that are sitting there along Peru Road, and you've got vehicles trying to get around them, and you've got vehicles coming in from the south on Peru Road, you know, wrapped around that curve there, and it's, it's a, it's a dangerous situation there. So there's two things there that I'd like to see make, make improvements on.
What specifically do we need to explore before we can talk about who owns it, who has possession, easement, title? I mean, it sounds like we need some background work on this to know whether or not.
Yeah.
Vacating a road is even the correct phrase.
Yeah. That's, that's, I'm gonna have to go back and review the file to see if this is, like Amy said, if this was titled over to the, to the county, that's a different story versus vacating, you know, vacating would not be the term we would use.
Correct. This is, this is a request to vacate a road that we might in fact have interest in maintaining because it's plotted for us and also that it affects safety.
Right.
So I guess it's.
Can I ask a question then? If you intend on maintaining the road as it exists, then you'll be taking care of it over the winter?
That's a good question. I think it goes to the status of the road. Anthony is shaking his head. I don't know if you have video. Can you answer that automatically?
I think Supervisor Wickham, I think one thing to understand, Amy and others involved that, you know, this is just discussion.
Correct.
So, so, you know, real pointed questions are, are difficult. I think it's just discussion. I don't think there's any decisions being made. But we do maintain roads in various subdivisions already, and then there's other private ones that we don't. So there's, there's a lot of various scenarios of, of our maintenance on, on various roads throughout the county. But, but I think we do, we do need to get it clear on what we want, and I think today's a, a good opportunity for those to voice what their interests are and what their ideas are to, to improve the situation. I don't hear anyone saying they want to shut you down or they want to impede your progress in potentially doing what you want with this property, whether it be maintaining it or selling it.
Okay. We could go back. Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, sorry, I was just, I just was saying okay. Sorry.
Well, I was going to address the condition of some of the trailers that are alleged to be lived in but are, have tarps for roofs or cardboard for windows.
Well, it's not on the agenda as that, but I am working on evicting twelve and thirty-two. So the twelve, I know, it looks like it's falling apart. And so that is, you know, not good. And then thirty-two has junk. It turns out the guy's a junker, so the junk appears and the junk disappears. But I have sent him an eviction notice, so I'm kind of trying to give him enough time to get his shit out of there before I file suit.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, I think thirty-four hasn't, has expressed an interest in thirty-two. And I've, I sent her a letter explaining to her that she could contact the owner, probably buy it at tax sale, or wait for me to try to get it by abandonment. But, and I also told her I don't know the condition of it, so that would be her battle. But I know there's some concern about the condition of her trailer. So I also told her about twenty-two, not sure. I know the owner's address has moved, so it might be that his kids are maintaining that and not doing a good job, but I'm in the process of addressing that too. I'm not sure, yeah, that's marked as twenty-two on there. I don't know if, I don't remember there being any cardboard on the outside of windows, maybe on the inside, but if you can tell me what slide that is, if you see it on the slide.
I just was out there this morning, I was just driving by this morning, Amy, and saw, I, I don't, my, this is my view, what I observed, so it doesn't relate necessarily to the photos that are presented, but there certainly are, is it trailer with a tarp on, as a roof? And there are certainly windows that are carved.
That would, that's thirty-four. Yeah, I don't know. I haven't seen those, but the, the tarp on the roof is thirty-four, and she has expressed interest in other trailers. So she's an elderly lady, and she's been in the court for years and years and years. And I know she has family, but I don't know if they're in a position to help her. But you would hope that they would be in a position to help her update her mobile home and, you know, make sure that a new mobile home or newer home, mobile home has better infrastructure than the old one. But like I said, I don't have possession of the trailers. I don't own the trailers. So that's why I was referring her to trying to get her to contact the owners directly or buy it at tax sale or not wait for me because it would be much simpler for her to go ahead and do that than for me to attempt to, because, yeah, abandonment takes a while and it's not a sure thing. So I'm working on those other hotspots, but like I said, it takes a while to get people corralled and get them out.
Well, I, I want to thank you. You have done tremendous work, and I know that it's not easy and you, you know, the frustration, I hear you expressing that and, and the board appreciates. Well, I'll speak for myself, of course, but I appreciate all the work you've done. I, I don't think that our citizens would feel that the mobile home is, we might still get people complaining about violations because of tarps and trees growing, you know, seemingly maybe through trailers. It's just, there's still issues about appearance and safety as you drive by. That isn't to take away from all the work you've done. No one ever sees the before and after, you know, side by side there as they evaluate. So I, I wish you to continue to make those efforts that you're, you are detailing to us. That's great, thank you. And the issue of the status of the road, we will work that up here. It sounds like we need to have refreshed memories about status and ability to vacate. I don't know what more we can do today.
I have one other question, Amy, if you would, would be able to enlighten me. On slide number seven and eight, there's an, an outbuilding made of cinder blocks. What, what is the purpose of that building?
It's a shed.
Would you be able to comment? Is, is it just for storage?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any plans for that building at this point?
I plan to leave it there.
In that condition?
Could you hear me?
Yes, I did, thank you. In that same condition or?
Well, it had, it had, it had a new roof based on requests you made five years ago. Now, are you worried about the door? Is that what the concern is?
I'm just asking.
Or you just don't like the shed?
So, no, I didn't say either of those things. I'm just asking you a question of what you plan to do with it.
I plan to leave it there.
In that same condition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions of Amy?
Amy, do you have a timeframe that you're looking to, you know, to make major decisions? Okay.
I'm done with getting nitpicked over this, and I know it was a mess, but it's a hundred and ten percent better than it was, and it's a million times better than it was during the eighties and the nineties. So I'm selling. You should be happy. Unfortunately for the people who've been there for thirty or forty years, it's probably not going to be a good thing for them, but I'm done with getting nitpicked, and I'm still getting nitpicked, and that's fine. I know there's somebody who drives by there who's very unhappy with the aesthetics, but like I said, it's a million times better than it was and a hundred and ten times better than when we started this five years ago. And so when it comes down to it, somebody else, it'll be somebody else's problem and you can deal with them.
Thank you for sharing that.
Anything further?
I have nothing. Thank you, Amy.
Yep.
Thank you. Tammy, did you have anything further you wanted to add?
No.
We just have another minute before.
Yep, that's fine. Just wanted to bring it forward, bring the conversation forward so that we can keep in, working with this with, you know, Ms. Knapp would like to get rid of the mobile home and we have some issues, or the mobile home parking, so we have some issues to kind of clarify and move forward with it. So that's why we started this work session to start moving forward with it, okay?
Very good. Thank you, Tammy.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Tammy.
Our next work session is with the IT Director to discuss the conduit purchase opportunity along the Southwest Arterial, and that is not scheduled to begin for another minute and a half. Did you have something else?
Well, I think just since we have a couple minutes, maybe we could, you know, refer back to the county engineer related to timeframes and expectations. We do have a private business owner that, that wants a response from the county related to discussions today, and I think we owe at least an outline of when that occur. We heard her request as soon as possible, so maybe my, my question back to Anthony and/or whoever is going to review these documents, when would you be able to have this information back to the Board of Supervisors so that we can move forward with some type of decision or action? All right, Nathan, we're, we're, we're using all time allotted.
I can have, I can have something back to you by next Monday, so we can review it again next Monday if you wish.
And then based upon what you've discovered and then also what normal actions would be if, one, the board wanted to proceed with, whatever the word would be, a vacation or transfer?
Well, if it's vacation, which it sounds like it's not, you know, but if it's, if we're vacation, it'd be about a four-week process, you know, to go through the public hearing, the publishing of all that, and then just a resolution, some resolution to vacate that property. It's a matter of.
You'd.
Good enough. Matter of getting rid of a title piece of ground, I'm gonna have to, that's gonna take one more time to research. I'd have to circle back with CJ on that and figure out how we're gonna do that.
And so in that scenario, are you anticipating a couple more weeks or? Just trying to set expectations and I'm trying to tell you what to do, I'm just have.
It, it could be the same timeline, depending on, well, maybe CJ's scheduled too, but.
Miller up in Mattling, let's find out what we have and what Ms. Knapp has and what these boundaries are and perhaps, I guess, the Behlows across the road and how that all looks, you know, more globally and then, and then in particular into requests. So Jeff's always kind of a Johnny-on-the-spot kind of guy. I would think he'd get that to us in a few days here this week. It might, it might make more sense, maybe just set it out a couple weeks.
Yeah, I would agree with you. Also, I believe we've lost Ms. Knapp.
Oh.
So I just, we'll have to have the time to communicate and connect with her as well. So she is not, I don't believe she's on with us anymore.
Two weeks from today, maybe, so that.
Yeah.
I think it's fair. Okay.
One other option, you were talking about safety with semis parking there. Would it be feasible maybe for the county to look at purchasing a piece on the right-hand side of the old road? We would own all that, and you could make that more of a parking spot for the semis waiting to get into John Deere to keep them off of Peru Road. And Amy would just own all of her property on the other side of that. That's just a thought.
As a concept, I would like us to, to review the, the safety of that area related to, to John Deere, the trucks and/or the exit traffic. Most of the attention got put on the other side, but I can tell you firsthand experience, once the, the shift's let out, it's like a racetrack and people are moving in and out of that area. And normally there isn't, the, the trucks backed up at that time. They, they're sensitive to that, but any additional safety we can review and/or coordination with the, you know, John Deere, I think would be, would be wise.
Well, so it also.
I like that idea.
Kind of two different things going on too. So we have the request to vacate the ground, but then I also hear that there's the possibility of selling this ground. You know, those could be two opposite directions, I guess.
Very good. You'll be back to us within a couple weeks then.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Oh, we lost Nathan.
We lost Nathan. He'll be back in a minute, are you sure?
Yeah, he's mad. We kicked him off the podium, taking his computer and he's going home.
There he is.
Oh, he's not mad. Didn't take his computer and go home.
No, no, no. Yes.
I knew you wouldn't do that. I was just teasing.
So I have been able to talk with each of you individually up to now to kind of give some background on this. But the short answer of this is that the city of Dubuque, in partnership with Iowa DOT, is several weeks away, but several weeks as in like three to four, they're, they're at the finish line here, for sending a rather large conduit and fiber infrastructure for the Southwest Arterial out to bid. As that gets closer and closer to the finish line, the city, through GDDC, has approached us offering if we would like to purchase a duct within this infrastructure. So there is going to be two conduits, eight ducts in one, seven in another, along with a lot of handles. I've seen the design that's gone out or that will go out, it's, it's tough. It's, you couldn't ask for. it's top. It's, you couldn't ask for more modern professionally-designed ITS system for this structure. They would be willing to sell us a duct for the same cost that they would normally lease it to us. They have lease rates of $5 per linear foot on a 20-year basis, and they'd be willing to sell it to us for that same cost. When you do the linear feet math, um, it's, it's $150,000 or close to that, and we would have access to the conduit to the left of 20, and then to the right of 151. This is the high-level document. This is not the detailed one, um, but from a high-level perspective, you can see that there are handholds and vaults along, frequently, they're all over the place, Military Road, North Cascade. We would have access to all the vaults. We would have access to all the handholds and our duct to run our fiber for whatever we would choose to do with it down the road. You also see there's Cyple Road right there. It's not that far up to West Campus. It's also not that far to Swiss Valley Road, the Nature Center. There's a lot of potential over the next five, 10, 15 years, as the county builds out its own conduit and fiber I think it's a good value. Um, if we don't do it today, we can always lease it later. It's not gonna go anywhere. Um, but they are at the point where they're ready to send this out to bid, and they would like to know if we would commit now to purchase it. Again, I don't, this isn't yes or no today, but I need consensus from the board. Do you want the city to come back with a formal document in a few weeks to actually then set it in stone?
Tell us more about the benefits. So, wha- how would this benefit the public, the county?
Certainly. Short-term, not gonna be a ton of benefit, just being frank, because we don't have any conduit or fiber to speak of out anywhere. Short-term, as in the next year. When we look out farther than that, as ARPA funding projects are reviewed, if this goes forward, this would be a good cornerstone piece to helping drive other decisions of where we want to go. So, we could continue this, build a similar infrastructure from US 20 up to West Campus. We could do something similar down Military Road, North Cascade, and the way this would look from a vision standpoint with the city and GDDC to have similar lease agreements. So, if they have a provider that's going to lease a duct in their conduit system, we would want to have something compatible from a lease standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, as we would build stuff out on our stuff. So, either North, North Cascade, 151, um, I think it's Military Road. So, we would hypothetically, if this goes forward and we do other larger bills, we would do something similar along county infrastructure roads, and then say, I'm not gonna name-drop ISPs, just say random ISP number one, or random ISP number two. They would want access to subdivisions down here. Well, on Southwest arterial, they will lease duct from the city, and then they would lease duct from the county, jumping from one system to another system. That's for the promotion of broadband. As we get our own assets under control, West Campus, Swiss Valley, there's other assets in the Southeast quadrant that may be coming. This would benefit all of those, because we would control our destiny a little bit more, having our own fibers.
So, as of right now, this would be a solo segment, and if the county did nothing further, it probably would have no value for the county, but if we would continue to build out our fiber infrastructure, as you proposed in your rescue plan proposals, um, and if the board accepts those, then this would add more value.
I would agree with that statement. If there is no further investment in conduit and fiber, intentional investment, and we're gonna have little things here and there just because of needing, but if there's no intentional investment going further, we would find, we would find a way to leverage it, but it would be less valuable, because we would still need to get out to West Campus, or we would still need to get down, but it would be hard.
I would assume our partners, the City of Dubuque, would lease us theirs if we decided not to buy, assuming...
If we, if we choose not to buy, leasing is always on the table.
Okay.
Always go back to them.
Talk me through generally high-level, the cost difference between those two. You mentioned $5 a linear foot.
Hmm.
So, if we lease it, is it $5 a linear foot a year or...
Every 20 years.
Every 20 years?
Yes.
20 years. So, for 20 years, we get the same cost as buying it? I wouldn't buy it then. Um, serious?
I mean, in 20 years, we would not have to renew the lease, and it would be... If you're going to lease conduit, you'll install your own fiber in the conduit. It would seem unlikely that you would not renew the lease in 20 years, because then you'd have to pull your fiber out if you didn't do that.
It's very challenging for, for board and somebody in my position to, to guess what fiber optics will be like in 20 years in Dubuque County.
The way, the way things are going in 10 years, it might be outdated, right?
It would not be outdated in 10 years. You don't, you won't hear me make...
About a lot of things 10 years ago that are junk long ago.
Uh, I hope you're right, for, for all those investing in this. Um... Is there any chance that the city would be able to accommodate our, either indecision or, or position now with either an extension, or they put it in there, and an option to, to buy or to, to lease, and have them absorb the costs upfront, so that it's there for us as a partner?
I am happy to ask the question.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, we just, about a couple of months ago, approved over $300,000 worth of land value back to the City of Dubuque, just for no consideration.
I have been working with GDDC over the last few months to identify needs and assets and ARPA funding paths, and this was brought to me, and I am bringing it to the board. I think if the county wants to begin to actively promote and assist broadband deployments, and to begin to have our own fiber infrastructure throughout the county, this has great value. The timing was different, but it's not. This is what was relayed to me. I'm happy to go back to the city with any questions, but what has been relayed to me is they would like an answer very soon.
So, that would pose a question. I would be very interested to know what their plan is for fiber throughout the City of Dubuque and/or collaborations with the county. I would be very interested in that. This is one component, and I would love to be compelled to say yes, but it seems like you're just looking at one road segment, and, uh, that, as you indicated, if it doesn't connect anything else, it has very little value near term. But if you could provide information about what the grand plan is and why are they doing it now? I mean, so, there must be a reason that they're placing the mediancy on this development now, and this is, this is outside the Southwest arterial contract. I would assume that we paid for half of it.
Yeah, this is...
So, this is the City of Dubuque's paying 100% of this, or, well, maybe not. They're, they're managing it. The funds could come from various sources.
The funds are actually from the state DOT.
Yeah.
The city was awarded the contract, for lack of a better phrasing, um, to design, build, and run this.
Does the city have costs, then, on this?
They would, they're putting their own camera systems and their own fiber in. They have costs. I don't know what those would be, but this is, they would have costs above and beyond what they are required to do as part of the specs from the Iowa DOT.
And by right of the city owning the, the land in that area, they have, they can charge what they want and/or include us or exclude us. Is that what you're saying?
That would be a correct assessment.
Yeah. That partnership. Okay. Yeah, lukewarm. I would like to know their whole plan, if it, if it has value, maybe. I mean, I'm a supporter of getting, you know, more high-speed broadband throughout the county, but there seems to be a lot of ways to do it, and you've got a lot of good proposals that we've glanced at, and there is state and federal money being appropriated for this use. Uh, I would be hesitant to, to put our dollars in front of those, but, um, I'd like to know more about the overall plan. But right now, I'd have to say I'm lukewarm on the...
Nathan, can you, can you tell us about the, um, the state money that's being spent on broadband? Is that going to trickle all the way down to Dubuque County?
So, it depends on what ends up actually passing. Um, if the infrastructure bill, the bipartisan infrastructure bill...
In Congress.
In Congress. If that eventually passes the House, as is, and is signed by President Biden, there is a billion dollars allocated in there that is directly to the counties, which is important. So much of what has occurred thus far, in fact, almost all of it outside of ARPA, always filters through the state, and I'm not gonna go too far down a rabbit hole here, but if it goes through the state, Dubuque County's not gonna get much of anything, no matter how hard we swing at the pinata. If it goes directly to the counties, which is as it is written, I don't know if it's going to be grant-based. The, the Treasury guidance comes after the bill, but as it is written right now, counties will be encouraged to pull money from that billion dollars for middle-mile fiber projects. Middle mile, which is what most of the proposals I hit you with for ARPA is. This is a middle-mile project. It's just also bundling other stuff. It's bundling an ITS system for the Southwest arterial, ITS is Intelligent Transportation System, DOT, city, but there's 14 other ducts available for internet providers to lease from the city to further broadband fiber-to-the-home deployment. So, if it comes, having something, I have to believe would help us when applying for grants. I can't promise that, but when you look at these grants, adding on to existing infrastructure has more appeal than starting from scratch using federal money. So, you know, there's a lot of ways to slice and skin this. I feel this has value. That is my opinion on what this would mean to the county over the next 40, 50 years.
What you have up here right now, how close is the, the connection to Heritage Trail?
Uh, we can find that out pretty quick here.
Which is your major ARPA request?
That would, if, if it is, yes, that is a concept. It is a concept, but yes, that, we can find that out pretty quick here.
So, while you're searching for that, though, what, what really struck me different, and Aunt, and Nathan and I had brief conversations prior to this meeting, but we didn't talk about this piece, is if we have the option to, to lease, if that is true, for the same amount over the next 20 years, um, I think you'd wanna pair, for $150,000, you'd wanna pair that lease option with the quote millions that you might spend to actually develop your own. This doesn't drive anything. This $150,000 in this segment is not, I think what I wrote was, uh, best and highest use. I mean, I think having a, a plan to create a more of a network around the county that may cost millions would be much more of a important priority to talk about versus this one segment. And I appreciate you bringing it to us because of the timeline. That's, you'd hate to miss out on opportunities. So, I'm not, you know, saying shouldn't have brought this to us, but it doesn't seem like this is, this seems like, uh, it's the tail, not the dog.
So, it's approximately one and a half miles to West Campus, and...
The map really needs to show the county assets.
I'm not showing it.
And how close this gets to the county assets that need to be connected to high-speed and that.
Yeah.
I see this as the first strike for a different type of infrastructure that we get to own as compared to lease. In the past year, we've entered into leasing agreements with the city to lease conduits based from them.
While you're looking at, I still go back to those. So, you feel confident that we could get a lease agreement for the same amount as the purchase price for the next 20 years? If we can get that in writing, I think that's gold.
I, I am high, high confidence in that. I don't have it formally from the city, but I have written emails back and forth saying it's $5 per linear foot to lease conduit.
And that's not annually. That's a...
20 years.
20 years.
So, it, it would be a savings...
Even the time value of money over 20 years at $150,000 needs to be ahead.
What were you gonna say, Nathan?
It would be a savings of $150,000 20 years from now, when we would go to renew the lease, assuming they don't increase the cost.
Two, one, nine, a per...
Um, assuming they don't increase the cost, which I'm sure they will. They're, I have a spreadsheet...
But, but you, you could get 20 years locked in, is what you're saying. They would agree with that.
Yeah, so we could cut them a check for $150...
Or you can buy it for $150,000.
Right.
At this point, unless we had a connection, I don't know why you'd buy it, unless we have a plan, and the board approved and agreed on a plan to connect it. Otherwise, you spend the money here, and it's just, if we don't agree on a more expansive plan, this is wasted money. I, I don't know why you would do that. I, I like the, your other plans. We just haven't gotten to those.
And I think we, we should probably develop the county plan and the county asset development, because my concern isn't about what other charges the city is doing or not doing. That's, that's their business, and they're approaching us with what they hope is an opportunity. Certainly, our technology director sees it as a great opportunity. Something you've not shared with us is the benefit of leasing as compared, or owning as compared to leasing. So, either way, you wish to look at that. What can you do if you own as compared to leasing? Can you sell other opportunities to other people, to other, if you own it?
If we owned it, we would not, I mean, no, there's not a huge, other than a financial difference. There's not going to be much difference between leasing and purchasing. We're not going to resell our duct to another provider. That's, it's not our conduit. It's, I mean, we own our duct for our purposes in this instance. If there is a one-off case, or there's some sort of nonprofit, I'm sure we can work out something, but we're not gonna actively be reselling space in our duct or our fiber to other entities. This is a...
So, it cannot be a moneymaker for us.
No, it cannot be a moneymaker for us. That's, if we put our own conduit in, which, again, grandiose, big plans, then yes, it could be a revenue generator, and that's part of the equation, part of the bigger scope plan, but not this.
But if we don't do that, it's sunk money. It's a dead end. It's a one segment.
Yep.
So, this investment only benefits the public if we spend hundreds of thousands or millions more, right? And so, my concept is, let's talk about the hundreds of thousands and millions more in that network, and make those big decisions versus a small decision that is just one segment. That, that's, that's where I'm at after listening to it, you know? And that's... that is just one segment. That's where I'm at after listening to it, you know. On that strong assumption that the lease rate for twenty years is the same as the purchase rate.
It is.
Okay. That's where I'm at. So I would have less interest in pursuing the opportunity right now, but I'm very interested in pursuing your discussions and your plans for how we would connect the whole county over the next five, ten, fifteen years.
Yeah. So I know there's been conversations about who builds spreadsheets in here. So I have a spreadsheet that I have built that will show the comparisons between leasing fiber from the city and leasing conduit and us putting our own fiber in it. Conduit and fiber wins hands down when you look over forty years. Like, I don't think there's gonna be a long conversation once you start seeing these numbers. I feel purchasing it is a good first step, but we can always lease it six months, nine months, a year from now when we have a plan. We can absolutely lease it.
I'm not clear what you're saying, Nathan. Maybe it's the mask and the audio. So are you saying there's no reason to do this now?
I feel it has value to purchase it because if we're going to save money in the long run, I feel it has value to purchase it. Are we going to lose out of opportunities? No. We can always lease the exact same duct for essentially the exact same amount of money and put our own fiber through it when we're ready to do that. So I feel it has value. I'd like to see it happen, but, you know, it was a time-sensitive offer. I was asked to, you know, quickly get a yes, no on this, motion to proceed consensus, and then come back with formal paperwork.
I think I have one final question. The funding source for this, so if the board said, yes, let's buy it, let's partner with the city of Dubuque and buy at this, where would those funds come from? What would be your proposal?
My proposal would be ARPA funds.
Rest.
Because this will work towards the promotion of broadband promotion, facilitation, not directly because they'll be leasing, but at some point, they're gonna jump out of their conduit and into a conduit system that we have built. So it fits the bill. I mean, and if we end up linking it to West Campus, it fits public health. So you can absolutely use ARPA funds for this, and of course, any other funding options would work too.
And so this would probably have to then proceed our normal ARPA process of reviewing, which we haven't discovered. That's kind of next session. So we would need to make a decision and probably earmark that for, which is a very small decision. It's less than one percent of the funds that we have available, but it would be another push on us to, okay, let's use ARPA funds. Let's take this request, put it ahead of the other ninety. We have ninety that we ask the public and internal departments to do. This one comes from a partner of the city, and it jumps to the top of the line. Another reason I'm not crazy about it, granted, not for ten million, it's for a hundred and fifty grand, but you're now gonna circumvent your processes just because of one request.
The timing is unfortunate.
Yeah.
The timing could have been month and a half, two months from now, but that is not what has been relayed to me.
Yeah. I'm okay holding. That's where I'm at right now. Taking no action at this point is where I'm at.
It's a lot of money, and it's basically the bridge to nowhere at this point. That's the issue. Obviously, if we do plan to do some more infrastructure things, obviously, that's a starting point. A hundred and fifty thousand, well, we can lease it for a hundred and fifty thousand for twenty years. Well, after twenty years, it's another hundred and fifty thousand, okay? If we buy it, it's a hundred and fifty. It's ours. It's done. We lease, well, it's gonna be a continuing payment every twenty years. I'm not sure which way to go on it at this time. I guess I'd like to hear Ann's thoughts.
I think it's an opportunity to do first strike for infrastructure in a place where the state is not going to help us. So if it's an opportunity, I can't, I can't, I don't have any context for why the city's time rollout of this is one way or the other. It's an opportunity that we have. I'm inclined to do it because I think that anyone I've addressed with the county through federal funding, using those funds for broadband expansion, it sounds like it's an opportunity that the time is right. We have federal money. So it's not like we're trying to find it in the budget. The opportunity is there. It's only to nowhere if we do nothing more.
Right.
But I don't know that this board is going to say right now to the county at large, we're not doing anything with broadband. We are a county that the state is not assisting because of other demographics and other maps and such. Your explanation matches what I've heard at least twice before about the state is not looking at Dubuque County for broadband infrastructure investment. We are not in that pocket. So then we have to make our own steps, and I would hope it would be the start of a broader program. So I still favor it. Same as our discussion, it's, I don't have to have the things that are untangibles for return on investment. Our opportunity, the same thing to put down grant dollars or have things available to match grants. That's how I see it. It doesn't have to make money for me tomorrow for my vote to make sense for the county overall.
I just think it's an odd first one to do.
Yeah, I hundred percent agree. It's a kind of.
Take a hundred and fifty grand of federal taxpayers' money with no guarantee it will have any value because there's no guarantee that this board is gonna decide on any other fiber programs. And so you're putting the tail on the front of the dog, and that's not how, that's not how dogs are made. I just, yeah, I'll probably be voting a no against this. It's just, it's not how you go about building an infrastructure for a county fiber-wide. So why are we proceeding like this? And it's nice the city of Dubuque asked us, okay? But it's not the plan. It's one segment. It's, like you said, a bridge to nowhere. It's like a road that, you know, we don't have enough dollars to build roads to nowhere and hope a subdivision is built. That's not how that works.
I don't know that it's to nowhere. It's to the opportunity portion of the county, right? It takes us right to twenty, very close to Piastah. I mean, it begins, it's the jump-off point. That you can't see anything around it right now doesn't mean it's to nowhere. I guess that's the defining, it's just perspective of it. But we know already on our agenda today, there was the information about the expansion that the city is doing in this area along the Southwest arterial. This is the area that industry expansion is focusing on, or one of the areas. So are we going to be in this game or not?
I'm with you on that. So if I can get, you know, we're not locked down commitment, but if I get verbal commitment from my colleagues that there's hundreds of thousands or millions to connect this segment, I'm ready to go. We haven't gotten there yet. And so procedurally, to commit dollars and you don't have the other commitment is a little risky in government. It's risky in business as well. So verbally, you both wanna nod your head like, yeah, well, I'm willing to spend a couple million in ARPA funds to connect this. I'm ready to roll. But that's not on the agenda today either.
But it's part of the discussion because right now.
But if it's not a yes, it's wasted money.
I understand that, but like I said, it's the connection between center of the county and the south. Are we going to connect to it next year? I can't say that. It might be five years down the line that we connect to it, but we still own that conduit, I guess, you know? Our lease goes on forever then. We don't have to worry about another hundred and fifty thousand every twenty years, but it's going to eventually get connected, in my eyes. But when? I can't say.
Yeah, the thing we do need to restate is that the five-dollar lease linear foot is significantly discounted from the city. So that is already, in our negotiations earlier this year, that was a discounted rate. So.
Yeah, that's a friends and family rate.
Pardon?
That's the friends and family rate.
Correct. And so the friends and family is also gonna change over time. I mean, I'm not supposing what twenty years will be. I don't know. I'm trying to make the best decision I can now, but it seems a simple step to take. And if it's flat-footed, then it is, but it's an opportunity, and I do wanna have other discussion with you about your grand ideas of further infrastructure internet development. I don't see another partner coming forward to move this needle.
Yeah.
We have to take bites at it ourselves as best we can, knowing what we know today.
It's gonna be a several, several, several-year project to get everything connected.
Yeah, that's, I mean, example, if you told me right now, go buy a million dollars' worth of conduit.
I'm not gonna do that, but.
If you told me to do that, it would be thirteen months.
Right.
Before I can have spooled a conduit in our back parking.
It's that comment that scares me, that I'm not gonna approve millions of dollars' worth of conduit.
Not right now.
If you don't. Well, if you don't do it, the longer you do it, the more this money just sits there. It's just, I don't, I don't know why. The hundred and fifty thousand is very small. It's, you know, it's not, it doesn't move the needle on this problem. So why start here? It's just, I don't know. So anyway, I'm less favorable for it, you know, for the whole concept of getting fiber to the county, and I'll be supportive of your million-dollar proposals that you're bringing to it. That's what I'd like to focus our time on, not this. I think this is almost a distraction and almost just a one-off. And to jump this ahead of all the other ninety, and some of them are yours, all the other ninety proposals also is disingenuous. We spend a lot of time and energy on going out to the public and saying, here's ARPA funds. We want your survey. We want your input. We want your application. Here's the date. And then this one jumps to the top of the line? I don't like that either.
Well, we could choose to fund it out of Nathan's budget or out of the county basic budget. We could do that as well.
I would be very against that as well.
I'm just saying, it's not, it doesn't need to be disingenuously. You have to perceive it that way.
That's also a bad financial step, but in my view, I just wouldn't do that either. So it just, it seems ill-timed and just ill-placed, my vantage point, and I think.
I agree. If I could have done it, I would have done it reverse order, but this is an opportunity that was presented to me, and I brought it to the board. I feel it has value. Over thirty, twenty, thirty, forty years, it will have value to Dubuque County. But again, I mean, it has value of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And I'd like to have the city give us opportunities to do this wherever they put in major infrastructure expansion of this magnitude. I'd like to know that. If I can be joining, bring the county along, I think that's helpful to know. So I'm glad this is for us. I'm not sure if we have consensus to move forward or not, you know, and what the city's final date is.
What I would be needing today is consensus to say, city, through GDDC, please draw up formal paperwork for the board to review at a future date here. Maybe the timing will come about where this can be lumped in with the bigger picture. I don't think we should count on that. I think, I don't know, they could have it here tomorrow. It could be three, four weeks before they get it to us. I don't know.
Right. But if we move forward on this, and if there's consensus, and they draft papers, and we're gonna go this direction, whenever you make your ARPA presentation, certainly lighting up the Southwest arterial will be an important thing to say.
It'll be a permanent marker there.
Right. Start to see how this looks in terms of county ownership, as well as opportunity in the least conduit that we have over coming out, I think Chevigny Road is where we are and connecting to, you had a master plan to do leased opportunities.
Yes, and that's.
With the city.
Coming. It's, it's coming. We have things moving.
You asked for consensus, so I'm out. So it sounds like you're for sure in, so if Mr. Podoff could give us his vantage point, we can probably move forward.
I'm gonna be in favor, but I think if we want, we have to start someplace. This is a bargain to start. We're getting the duct for what it would cost the lease, and we own it. We're done. Okay, we got our starting point anyway. That's the only way we can move forward.
Your consensus. True is consensus.
Yeah, thank you. I will get papers for you to review, and we can revisit it maybe as a bigger ARPA thing or before or after, depending on how fast this mobilizes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Anyone need to take a break, or can we move forward? Does anyone, staff, anyone needing to take a minute?
I'll take a motion to recess till eleven.
I will second.
Motion to second to recess until eleven AM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Aye. The motion carries.
Between FBI, CIA. They're like, fix this or you're in trouble.
Right. Our lights, we are back green to the, to the audience at large, talking about spy stuff. Our cameras are green. We are go. It's 11 o'clock. Stella Runde, our budget director is here to, um, begin a, a conversation about ARPA funds.
Yes. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So this is our first real official conversation about our American Rescue Plan Act funds. So, um, if you recall, I believe two weeks ago, we discussed, um, how do we get started, really? So I have projected on the screen our internal funding requests, which we had 26 separate requests. And I'll also share after this, our external request, and that number was 64. So the question really is, how do we start working through these requests and hearing, hearing the proposals from everyone? So, uh, what, we met with the working group last week, a couple of different meetings to, to start this conversation of how do we propose that we move through this? And we really came down to, we've just got to start somewhere. So, um, one of the things that we're going to be working on is identifying various funding sources. Everything, um, in our internal funding request certainly qualifies for American Rescue Plan funding. So what other potential funding sources exist is one of the main things we want to identify. Obviously, if there's other federal grants or other, um, other bills or anything like that that we're watching, we certainly want to pay attention to that before allocating our very finite resources. Um, the other thing that really came up is with our mental health and disability services. We've highlighted that as our very first starting point because that fund balance, funding source goes away at June 30th of 2022. So we know that we're quickly approaching that deadline. And if we want to try to use those funds or potentially co-fund with mental health fund balance and American Rescue Plan Act, we want to act on those as quickly as we possibly can to get any project moving, um, in that direction. We believe we have about a million dollars in mental health fund balance that if we do not use by June 30th, will be gone, uh, to the state. The region that we belong to, the East Central Region, also has a significant fund balance that is a potential resource as well. Um, if we identify, we could also ask for those funds. So those, those are what we, um, as a group decided we wanted to move with first, um, in looking with, at the board. Looking to the board to look at first, excuse me. So in our internal funding request, we highlighted, um, one application that we'd like to move forward with, uh, first, which would be the, uh, mental health and disability services request. Um, they call it the Take Care Center, uh, for 2.9 million dollars. So that along with, um, let me share the, the external request. So in the external request, we had, uh, four that we had identified. Two you've already heard from, um, but we may want to bring them in to clarify more. The Hillcrest Family Services Access Me Care Platform. And also the, um, Improving Access to Brain Health Services with their recruitment project.
And also one from Clark University.
Uh, for mental health services.
It's the Examination of Resiliency of Youth and Families Recovering from COVID.
So we would have to look at that, um, a little closer to see if that is in fact a mental health service. That's where it really comes down to, um, if, if we can fund it through.
It's a, it's a local companion project to what the region is doing with the University of Iowa. So I would at least highlight that and ask you to use that lens. And then the other project that we have is with, um, the Department of Health. Has also brought forward a few that were the authorship of Amy Pro Sunleaf. Some of those proposals were for parity in payment and, um, Mental Health Court was one of her proposals. So I think just, if you could just highlight that again, going back into, that would be one of our departmental requests from the, uh.
Or the health.
Yep. Sorry.
Some Board of Health things fall in there too.
Okay. So yeah, Health Department, um, there's a Dubuque County Mental Health Court and Brain Health FPD. So we can pull that one forward as well as the Clark University, um, the, the Hillcrest Family Services Mercy One Turning Point.
And Turning Point may not be because it's substance abuse.
Not Turning Point. I, I misspoke there. Mercy One Dubuque Foundation.
Correct. Their mobile unit.
Yep.
Um, there was another as well I would want us to use, go, if you would go up to Catholic charity.
Opportunity to say which ones you want. I mean, I, because I have mine too.
Just categorizing things that could be brain health, and I'm just suggesting they want one of.
You're, you're dictating to highlight things. I don't know if that's where we're at. I mean, I'd like to highlight a few ones too on my list.
I'm pointing out.
Well, no, we're pointing out projects.
You're pointing out ones that are to fall under the mental health funding.
They should look at it from that. I'm saying there's some missing from her highlighted assessment of what could be brain health. And Catholic Charities, I haven't read their application, but just to see its recovery from jail, that's certainly something that the region does. Those are conversations we have.
I, I would be very interested in learning the process and procedure, how we're moving forward with the 20 million and the 90 applications versus highlighting specific projects.
Sure. So, um, knowing that we have so many apps and the volume, um, it's going to take us time to move through. So, um, our thoughts were to start with the mental health related requests and start, um, hopefully getting, uh, work sessions to review those apps with the applicants on October 18th. So two weeks from now, we're going to start asking people to come in and present. Um, the thought is to give possibly 15 to 20 minutes for presentation and then allow some time for the board to ask any questions that you may have of the applicant. So we want to allow them to give a, a high level presentation of what they've, uh, written to us and then allow you your time to ask questions for clarity.
So that's the start. We have a vision for the plan and we have a dollar amount of all the requests. I know there's 90 requests.
Okay.
We have a dollar amount for all the requests because that will kind of set up a scenario of not everybody's getting approved.
Yes. So for the external request, uh, total 64, that was 19,311,000.
External is 19,900?
Yep. 19,300.
19,300. And internal?
Internal is 26. Forty-six point five, forty-six and a half.
Five. All right. That's internal. So eight, five, five, 65 million.
So within that.
We're three times what we have money for.
Yes. So within that, um, the very first thing listed on our, our internal list, uh, we haven't talked much about this, but let me bring it back up, is our own internal revenue loss. So we measure under the bill, our revenue loss at four points in time. The first one being 1231 of 20. So that was our first measurement point. So at 123120, our revenue loss, um, under this legislation was almost 1.8 million dollars. So I would recommend that we allocate our revenue losses back to the county first before we do anything. We will also measure this at 123121, 22, and 23. So we'll have, uh, multiple periods of time to measure this and allocate. So out of our total 19 million dollars, I would recommend setting aside probably 5 million to measure those losses over time. As we get closer to 1231 of 24, you know, we're not going to wait for the final year, but we need to be watching if, if those funds are still remaining. At that point, we would want to allocate to projects, um, maybe a couple of years down the road. But I would set aside some of our funds to allow us to measure and, uh, fund the county, those revenue losses over time.
Now we're back to 15 million, so it's four times.
Yes.
Four times the request that we have monies available. And I think that's what the board needs to kind of focus on a little bit is how we're going to make these decisions. Um, you just start selecting winners off here, you're going to run out of money.
Sure.
I don't know if that's the best way to go.
So, um, next week, we don't have anything necessarily scheduled for Rescue Plan, but we could have a work session just for the board to discuss your thoughts, um, as we move forward here.
A suggestion that I had was for the group, Task Force, or the working group, or whomever is in that now, to prepare some written questions that you might ask some of the grant applicants. You know, are there things that you find are missing? So if they come and they make a 20, 25, 30 minute presentation, but we know that there's six questions that we need answered because you can see them, why wouldn't you let them know that in advance?
Certainly. So, uh, before we would have everybody or anyone here, we would certainly all want to be reviewing the application for completeness. Um, that is something the working group will be working on with the external applicants, uh, certainly. Uh, evaluating for completeness of the application, making sure we have all the information that, uh, we would need. If there are unanswered questions that we see, we would, uh, go back to them and ask them. Um, we have not reviewed all 64 applications to see if they in fact do qualify. So it'll be a part of that as well to see if they even qualify under this program. Anybody that we would potentially fund becomes a federal sub recipient. So that holds a lot of weight, honestly. Um, federal pass through grant making, uh, will put a lot back onto the county for monitoring. So we want to make sure that anybody we're awarding funds to is, uh, able to complete the federal, uh, requirements. So that'll be part of all of that. Um, one of the things that we discussed, um, aside from moving forward, reviewing the mental health application first, would then be to move into the internal funding request as the next kind of block for review.
Who made that decision? The committee's made up only of internal people. That was the punchline. Maybe nobody thought it was funny, but me. That is wonderful. Thank you. That makes it easier. I will retract my statement. So Nathan, you must be out of those, out of the gang. You're out, huh? Okay, um.
So one of the reasons we moved forward or, or proposed moving forward that way was because we know our internal request will qualify under this program and we know that we can execute our program.
Yeah.
So that gives us time to start reviewing the external stuff for completeness, the questions that may need to be asked, whether it does in fact qualify, um, some of those kinds of things. Not, we're not reviewing for, um, any kind of, uh, uh, how do I want to say, um, not for, uh, decision making, but just making sure that we are able to qualify under this program and, and complete any requirement.
Well, if I may, let me, let me say, I appreciate your approach on that. So I'll retract my sarcastic or snarky comment. So I appreciate you, you recognizing that those that have, uh, you know, internal requests in probably shouldn't be trying to prioritize and rank those. Um, so appreciate that. My, my first thought would be to look at the external ones. So, you know, we, we will have, you know, our own internal business will have plenty of time to nurture those over. The access to those applicants, an example, Nathan, has rental access available to us. And we've asked the public for their feedback. We've asked the public, our partners, for their applications. I, I think we should view those first. So that'd be my first comment, that we probably should reverse that, but that, that's where I'm at. I don't know if you have a comment or question to that? Is this, that's voicing my opinion.
That's fine with me. I mean, you got to start somewhere.
Agreed. And I'm like, I'm okay with mental health as well. I think that makes sense, you know, combing those dollars together because there are regional dollars as well. So that makes sense. And so I was commenting on your second piece about where to go after that. And, and I would want to look at external.
How would, uh, how's the city doing theirs? Are they doing anything similar to this or?
I would say we're probably pretty unique in the fact that we went out, um, for an external process like this. I would say many cities, it's hard to compare us to cities because many cities run utilities and utilities were one of the big, um, things, uh, that you could do with this. So the structural improvements and we, we all know that many cities have, uh, deteriorating utilities. So I think a lot of them are doing something like that. Um, I don't know about other counties. I would say we're out ahead in Iowa at least of what other counties have been doing. Many people, um, are still, I would say, back where we were in maybe April or May, forming their committees and deciding how they move forward. So, uh, we don't have a lot of people to compare to at this point. I don't know if the city, if any, have you guys seen the city doing anything?
Yeah, here you have your host. Get onto the mic.
This is Ed Raiber, and, uh, in, in discussion with my colleagues, I had, uh, emailed all of the cities in the county to find out what their plans were for their ARPA funds. And, uh, those are coming back in and I'm, I'm hoping, uh, sometime this week to, at least the largest cities to have a complete list of what their plans are and how they're doing that. Putting that together now, and then I'll send that out as a memo with my colleagues.
I think that's interesting, but we, we've already put our path forward and I think we need to honor our path. I'm not being, that's just talking to my colleagues here.
Was just what the city of Dubuque doing what theirs is.
Agreed. But I think you find we're very unique. I think when you, when you find, and keep in mind, some of the cities in our county apply for funds. So they go, here's what we're doing. We're asking you for money. Um, and so I think you find we're very unique. And, and I think we need to honor that uniqueness. I mean, this board made the choice of doing the survey and asking for external applications. Boy, I don't, I don't want to talk to all these external applications, say, we're going to put you back to the list and we don't know when we're going to review it. I think that needs to be one of our first objectives. It's a hard one because we don't have any prioritizations. We don't have any categories. That was one of the things I asked for, but we're, we've got the applications. I think we need to review them and process them.
I think for fear of using the word highlight again, I would like to have you, if you could, the group, identify the folks who applied for funding from us in December of last year.
So we have in fact done that. Um.
So they maybe should be first for.
More external ones. Agreed.
Well, I don't want to do any external application because I won't have any idea what the answer to a funding application is unless we've also looked at high goals of our own.
Why the heck did you, why did we, why did we invite applications if we're not going to review them? We need to review these applications.
I have been. Have you?
As a board, individually I've reviewed them. Yeah, as a board.
There's a, Jay, the, the Task Force is huge, so let's go through this in a way that makes great sense. I think the people that are still asking for funding for things that have already, their budgets have already sustained damage because they have been waiting for us as we review our charted. we review our targeted investment in our communities. I mean, there's a lot of change that we have made this year in our different programs.
And those are external applications, I agree with you.
Yes, they do.
I'm agreeing with you, they're external applications, let's review those, so I agree. I mean, I'm asking for the board for dialogue, I know, directing staff doesn't help, we make the decisions, what do we want to do? And you hear my voice, I'm interested in what my colleagues' voices are.
I don't want to talk about anything that's conservation-related until we know what the result is of the referendum, which will be after November 6th.
Fair enough, I agree with that.
I agree with that, I'm, I mean, I agree with going and looking at the external for the ones that had submitted for the grants previously that we some approved back in last January, that still haven't gotten any funding from us.
But I think we have consensus on that.
Okay. So we will start with the mental health services, knowing that that timeline is very short, and then we will move on to the external applications that also applied to us under our purchase of service program back under budget. So that'll, that'll be our starting point. And what we'll start doing is scheduling work sessions for presentation and discussion.
I'm comfortable with that.
If you, but I would like the obvious low-hanging fruit to be addressed by this group that's reviewing them before they get on the agenda, to see if in fact some of the groups that may have applied for our targeted community investment are being held to a different standard that they've used with us in the past for accounting purposes. Now the question is, can they fulfill the accounting and the auditing standards that are enhanced? There's a, they, they may be still a general budget-type person or group, but they may not be federally, because they become subcontractors, correct? Do we not have to worry about, I mean, there's other information that needs to be shared here in terms of the audit capabilities of the county with our auditors, our independent auditors. I just don't think we can just go to a nonprofit who's been asking us for funding for nine months, they may never be able to be a recipient of federal money, because of the other components, the other entanglements that come from the federal program.
Certainly. So one of, back to one of the things that I had spoke about initially, is that we would be evaluating all of these for potential funding sources. So not everything may qualify under American Rescue Plan Act funding. Are there other things where it could qualify, other grants that we know about, other legislation that's in discussion? Or is any funding to, you know, a specific organization directly from our general basic funding, as our last, probably?
I just would like to point out about the brain health issues. So to note how difficult it's going to be to get this done in a timely manner, the region is having a combined meeting, there is no meeting in December. And so if we don't take some action to move some things forward, we're going to be coming up to the inability to get things done. So this month, we need to, I believe, have made absolutely all of our decisions for brain health, so that we can get them on to the region for the November meeting, and that has an agenda deadline, so that those decisions can be made, and we can know those and have those checks out before the end of the year.
What is the agenda deadline for the region?
Anne Cameron and Jessica, it's about, usually two weeks before the meeting.
Okay.
Pretty aggressive. So we had a meeting last week, now it starts coming right up to November, and they're, it's just a condensed timeframe.
And then my other question would be, would you be interested in holding work sessions on the fourth Monday of the month related to American Rescue Plan in the afternoon prior to the night meeting?
I think we said no before, we're going to keep it the same pattern.
I'm interested in moving forward, and I realize and recognize that your points are valid related to the region, the mental health funding. We have the director, the CEO, May, right there, saying, we're making decisions soon, you better get in front of us. And I asked for more time, and she said, we're making decisions soon, so we need to move forward with those. So I would, you know, I think we, I think we have consensus to move forward with the brain health, mental health coordination items related to the region. If they're one-off, you maybe can put them to the back of that list, but if they're going to be going to the region and need the region's support, those are very timely. So I would agree with Supervisor McDonough.
We definitely...
To have those heard.
Definitely need to get those in line, the, find out the funding is going to go through there, Fontana, or wherever, yeah.
And then past that, the external applications?
Okay.
The old, the old external applications? Is that how we're categorizing them? Is that where we're at?
Right, the ones that I put in for grants.
I'm fine with that too today, you know, we're not going to handle all of it, but those are two good starts from my vantage point.
There are other communications that might be necessary as well. At least one applicant has contacted me to say they have a, they have a heightened timeline of when we will decide, because of they're using us to match something else. So I've encouraged them to address that with you, or write it into their application. So when we go through these, someone should be assigned to read all of these, so we can see if there's a time issue. I mean, I would hope as we sit here today, some staff person has, has together parsed these out, so they've all had eyes on them, so we can tell whether or not there's a burning deadline issue that we're just not going to pass over.
Right. I think that's our job. I mean, I think it's our job to prioritize and to categorize. And if we're not going to do that, then we do just what we did, high level. Bring in the brain health, mental health ones, next in line is the, you know, our on-deck is the old external applications. Past that, we got to get through those first, too. I, I think if we start pulling willy-nilly ones and/or jumping ones to the top, which we just did a half an hour ago, I think you have chaos. I just think you want some order, and I think we've established that.
There's going to be, obviously, a lot of discussion over all these. You know, there's going to be a lot of people unhappy, there's going to be some people very happy, you know, it's...
We have four times the amount of funding available.
Right. Last meeting, maybe we could apply to the government for some more ARP funding, and we...
Some of the applications from external groups are for projects that have already occurred.
Projects that are...
Are for projects that have already occurred, their time has already passed. Someone who's requesting funding for something that would have, they would have needed their funding before September 1st, those are, those are gone. So again, I do think it's incumbent upon our staff to be knowledgeable about these, so that we're not, we are not contributing to any chaos. I mean, I don't know that it's my role to reach out and say to an individual applicant, well, you know, you asked for help with a summer event, what do you want to do about it now? Are those folks just done because it's already occurred?
I agree with you, I mean, I agree with you, so, you know, but, but at one point, though, I think this board needs to say yes or no. I don't think we table any of these, I think that's, that's the easy way out, you know? I don't think the Board of Stains or tables on any one of these. You give them a yes or no, and that's why they elect us, and why we went through this process. So while I'd love to have staff, yeah, be knowledgeable and be educated on it, and I'm going to do my best, and I'm going to read every word of every one of these applications, that's my commitment, because we said that's what we're going to do. When we ask for applications, you want to, you want to know those. But I think it's our role, it's our role to make these decisions.
I'm not intending to fund interesting outside applications.
Okay, it's your opinion.
To the disadvantage of the gaps and the needs that have been addressed by our own department heads. When you look at that, you can see what the people who do our work, who are the experts we have hired to do those things, that's what they're telling us is needed. And so it might be that most of those get funded to some extent, and to the expense of another smaller organization or nonprofit that comes forward with truly a great idea, but we are not their funding source.
Yeah, we don't have enough money for all the applications.
Right.
So it won't, it won't happen, there will be a large percentage of these, you know, so...
We have to be aware of all...
A large percentage will be no, and I'm...
We have to be aware of all of them, that's how I feel.
Agreed, agreed, but we eventually have to take an order, and I think we've stated that. So yeah, there are going to be nos on this list.
And some of these are public health response generators at the courthouse.
I agree with you, but if you start going over internally, I'll, I'll go, what the heck did we ask for the external applications? Why did you do the survey? Which, by the way, I wasn't big on the survey. So we've already stated as a board, and I was dragging a little bit, that we want your input, we want your applications. You start backing off on a lot of those now, man, why'd we do it? So we each have our own decisions, we each have our own priorities and our own view, but I think they need to be heard, I think they need to have the opportunity to be presented, and internal as well.
I don't, I do not think we need to hear from every applicant. I don't.
I don't think you can pick and choose, say, I want to hear from you and not from you, because that's not fair, it's got to be eleven, level playing field either, everybody gets the chance to voice, or nobody.
I agree.
Or what standard do we want someone to have their application?
We have consensus, I agree. I disagree with exactly what Supervisor Potash said, that's consensus.
This is Auditor Dragato. There is a component that, what I'm hearing is that you want to take a look at every single one of these regardless of whether or not the group determines they're eligible for ARP.
External, external for sure, I do, just because I think it's...
And then what if our external auditors determine that they're not eligible?
You can give us that opinion, I want to hear that opinion.
That's not an opinion, I mean, if our auditors are saying something is not eligible under a program, that's a fact.
I'm using opinion as a general word, I want your facts and your word and your, your strong voice.
Because each, each one of these programs that we decide, that anybody decides is going to move forward, needs to pass that bar.
Fine, I want to hear that.
So there's, there's like a veto authority built in there.
That's a word I would probably not use, but I want to hear your opinion, I want to hear your voice, I want to hear your position.
Right, if it's not eligible, it's out.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Right, I mean, that's for ARP funds.
And this isn't just a group of staff, too, you have three staff members and one elected official who are looking at these for completeness, for clarity, for categorization.
I'm not challenging you, you're coming across like I'm challenging you, I'd say, I wanted to hear you, I can only say it most times, I want to hear your opinion, I want to hear your words, I want to hear your things. Ultimately, though, this is how the government works, we make those decisions.
I, I, I agree.
That's true, part of the government.
If you look at the list of, if you look at the list of applications we have, internal and external, you won't have this list completed until the end of the fiscal year, if you're lucky. And if we do look at external prior to internal, timeframe-wise, you're looking at, now talking about internal requests, at the same time you're talking about budgets, and you're going to run into a lot of issues here. We're not having work sessions prior to meetings on the evening meeting, so we're limiting the amount of time and the availability we have to discuss this.
I'm open to more time, by the way, too, so hopefully we can get past that. I think it's a good problem, I think we shouldn't be sweating too much. This is a good problem to have, and I'm ready to test my brain and work ethic to get through it, so...
Absolutely.
I, I don't think there's any problems.
We're looking at, you've tasked four people to sort of go through this and sort of get you guys what fits in these programs, what works in the categories.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that sounds fantastic. I don't, I agree with the chair that I don't think there's going to be a need or a possibility that you're going to talk to all of these people. It, it, I mean, some of these will not, will not pass, they will not pass muster at all.
Right.
I, I heard that.
I agree with you 100%.
To be able to invite those people here to make a presentation for something that can't possibly be funded seems disingenuous.
Right, well, if we already sent the application out, and they've already, they already sent it back to us, I think we, they need, they need an answer, and the answer, what I'm saying, needs to come from this board, that's what I'm saying. Whether it's five minutes, 15 minutes, is nuanced.
I agree on, from the board on the recommendation of the work group that the board has appointed.
I'm very interested in your feedback, yes.
But if they, you determine that it doesn't qualify, okay, it doesn't qualify, I mean, you can send it to us, and we're going to say, sorry, it doesn't qualify.
That's, that's the point, if the work group says it doesn't qualify, I don't see any way, shape, or form that the board is going to turn around and say, wait a minute, it does. Because the work group is applying certain metrics, applying guidance from auditors, and applying...
I'm not proposing how any of the 60 or 90 are going to get voted yes or no, I'm just asking about the process. And all I'm stating is supervisors, on public record, need to say yes or no. That's all I'm stating. There is plenty of work behind it, plenty of recommendations, plenty of other stuff, but I do not want non-Board of Supervisors saying no and removing these.
Of course.
That could be a recommendation, but I want it to come to this board, that's all I'm stating.
You could make a recommendation that these 12 groups or applications do not pass any standard for federal. We recommend that you deny them.
Right.
And then we don't bring them in for a 30-minute presentation.
Right. Well, if we, I think the board needs to vote on that, and if we agree, then yeah.
Of course, that's why it would come to us.
That's just coming to us, I...
Yeah, as long as, I'm just saying, as long as it comes to us and we make those decisions, and I wouldn't like to make them in group, I'd like to have, have those individual applicants approved or denied.
Right.
You know, might be the middle ground of partial funding.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, so I think I have the way forward for our group. We'll plan on October 18th, we wanted to give the organization just a couple of weeks to prepare.
I will be zoomed in...
Okay.
...that day, just for...
Perfect. Will you be somewhere where there's a good link?
Yeah, I'll be in South Dakota, they have a good link.
Okay.
Good peasants, too, I bet.
Be on a meeting, not hunting, Jay.
Unless there's something specific that the group would like to discuss, next week we will not plan to have a Rescue Plan work session for next week.
I would like to have one next week, because I would like to have your thoughts as to who are the brain health...
I would support that.
How will you know?
Yeah, I think...
What's, like, today I'm pointing out that you should look at Clark University, how will that be done if you are just inviting people that you've determined meet that categorization?
I would support getting a list next week for the brain health items, so do your best and collaborate with others that know she serves on the region board, that should be a great knowledge source of what those would be.
Okay.
So I, I think, I think to move sooner rather than later on those is wise.
We definitely have to move on those, we know that, so...
We'll move to the work session with the Human Resources Administrator to discuss diversity equity and inclusivity proposal. I don't know if we still have folks with us. Michael Jackson was going to, yes, he is still there. Do you have any reason to include him, Dawn?
Well, thank you, I did include a few things in your packet, and I'm, today I'm here to seek your support in some additional funding for some diversity equity and inclusion consulting services here at the county. You know, the, the timing of this is very important. You know, one thing close to home in, in human resources is that we continue to see fewer and fewer candidates apply for our jobs, which is troublesome. I think it was, you know, COVID played a part in that, as we had large populations just leave the workforce. But also now we're starting to compete with organizations that we may never have in the past, as they continue to increase their wages, to become more competitive, and, and that's something, you know, we obviously need to look for, or look toward as well. But, you know, recruitment and making sure that our workforce represents our, our community, that we are attracting the unrepresented groups in our county, is important to assure that we're giving, you know, equal and fair opportunities and, and accessibility to our underrepresented groups. This is also, I believe, a very good opportunity, as you just discussed for the last 40 minutes, that we have a tremendous amount of funding coming in for programs and services, and I think it's very important that we always look through the DEI, the diversity equity and inclusion lenses, as we look to allocate those funds, that we want to make sure, and that was one of the goals of the American Rescue Plan Act, is that we do give attention to those underrepresented groups in our communities. So I think it's also, as we see that funding, and also potential funding for a conservation bond referendum, if there is opportunity for the county to expand services and amenities, I think we want to ensure that there's going to be equal and fair accessibility to those throughout our community. So I think it's a, it's a very good time to, to begin walking through that, and I think it's important to have a consultant come in and do that. There are several reasons why I, I put that in here. I think in my, in my memo, I think when we go through this process, this is going to be something that I anticipate a consultant to address, our, our staff, our leadership team, and also our community. I think it's very important... think it's very important that we receive feedback from our community of how they see the county doing, to be able to help us identify gaps that we may not be aware of, um, and hold us accountable, ask us the tough questions. And I think you need a consultant to do that. I don't think that anybody internally, it would not, maybe not produce the same results if you have somebody, um, from the outside who's guiding you through that process, who's had, who's done that process as well, has that expertise, um, in, in looking at policies and programs and services to help us walk through there. So, um, I currently have ten thousand dollars in my training budget. Um, I'm anticipating that these type of consulting services, because I would like to see, again, have it, you know, not just leadership, um, go through this process, but our staff, our leadership team, and, and potentially and hopefully having some community, community engagement, um, events that I anticipate for their, um, for the rest of the fiscal year. Um, I would like to request an additional fifteen thousand dollars, um, through the end of FY twenty-two for these, um, services. Um, I would request that we would go out as a request for proposal. So I would draft that up with our scope of services, have what our selection criteria is. Um, I would like to share this with our leadership team and ask for, um, participants to help, um, sit on that evaluation team. I think it's not something that, um, I think it's important to get buy-in for these type of, of programs and services that multiple areas of our organization are able to select that, um, that vendor or candidate for this. So, um, if approved, those would be the next steps. And, and I would like to see by the end of the calendar year, have that process wrapped up and, and have a contract in hand. So we will have six months. Um, again, as you go through budget, as we, we start to learn if we have a conservation bond referendum, as you go through, you know, the next three years of the rescue plan fund, this would be six months that we can update our outdated policies, that we can put, um, diversity, equity and inclusion at the forefront of, of everything that we do. Again, a lot of what we do should go through that, uh, lens of saying, is the way I'm recruiting this, is the way that I'm putting this, you know, on access to Dubuque, am I really reaching the underrepresented populations? And, and it's getting that feedback and then saying, if that answers no, you know, what are the next steps to make sure that we're engaging those communities as well? So I'd like the, those to have the next six months in, in developing that. And again, during the budget process, potentially, um, forwarding some additional training opportunities. And maybe we would want, you know, we'll, we'll see where this takes us, if it's, you know, as we develop policy and procedures and services, would this be some additional months of consulting? Um, you know, are there, are there areas that are identified as we, you know, evaluate all of these systems that we want to, um, concentrate on with, um, you know, some recruiting dollars or, you know, I, I would like to bring those all through the budget process as well. So my request is for your support, um, to, to move forward with this request for a proposal. Um, and again, additional fifteen thousand dollars for FY twenty-two that is currently unbudgeted.
Do you have thoughts or questions?
Yeah. Is the main focus and scope of this consulting just our hiring practices? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I would see it as, I thi- I think that's one component of it. Um, you know, as we look at even accessibility to the services we provide, um, do we, you know, the amenities that we have, are we, are we reaching out to the underrepresented groups in our, in, in our county to ensure that they are aware of it, that they have accessibility to it? Um, you know, so it, it should, you know, almost everything we touch in every department, this should have, um, that in there. Also our boards and commissions, I think it's important, um, you know, we, we, you as a, as a board have, um, that information. And I think you've done a great job of looking, um, to diversify, um, become, have those boards and commissions more inclusive. Um, I would see an aspect of that, making sure that the, the decision makers, um, within, uh, the county are also representative of the county as well.
Certainly, we've seen this with the, our, um, our Board of Health.
Mm-hmm.
We did have a resignation that was a little scathing about the inability to look at other communities other than a white monoculture. Um, so, I mean, I, I, I like your comment about the boards and commissions, but I also think that we know that even in our own public health response to COVID, we have left people behind. And the Board of Health has talked about that, but has had no way to facilitate that conversation. You know, there's, you know, there's no one to step forward to say, I can lead you in that or I can, we can, we can bring that to maybe to a possible solution or a goal. We, we just don't have that. There's not that, that person, um, good morning Frank, you looking to vote?
Yeah.
Right around the corner.
Right there.
Yep. Good to see you.
Right, Brian.
So pardon me, but, um, a voter at the door.
You gotta, you gotta help the public. Gotta help the public. That's what we're here for.
Anyway, that, that's just, uh, to me comes as a, a top of mind example of where there's not a way to address those because we don't have that department. We don't have that, there's not a person to even begin that conversation at the county level.
And, and I would, um, as part of the scope of services, I would like to see, um, you know, these services provide the, what we now call the EEO committee, um, some guidance there of their role and responsibility and purpose. Um, that, that committee has been dormant for, for very long. You did appoint, thank you very much, two members today. Um, but I think it's, it's re, you know, invigorating that committee, figuring out their, their role and making sure that, um, you know, because I, again, it should touch, right now, some of the language is, is just recruitment for that EEO. I think it should and could and has a, um, great opportunity to expand that to services and programs and, and everything, all the services that the county provides.
You don't ask for much. So that's been my experience. And so, uh, uh, when you come with a request, I'm, I'm very interested in trying to honor that. Um, I would generally be in favor of this if, if we do broaden that scope to make sure it's not just hiring, but it's the services we provide, it's the makeup and accessibility of boards and commissions that we have, and then also the contracts that we, we award.
Our procurement.
So we spend a lot of money, you know, county spends a lot of money. And how are those contracts and how are those purchasing processes fair and equitable? And so if the board is interested in kind of including those items, hiring the services, boards and commissions, and contracts are spending, uh, I'll, I'll be supportive.
Would you also support, I guess we don't, you know, there should be opportunity for education and training of our own employees. Um, so maybe employment practices as a broader than just higher, but employment practices, best practices with regard to that.
So best practice with regard to hiring and, and, and what you should be aware of and understanding during hiring and, and expanding your pool. Yeah, that, I would see that in the hiring component.
I'm also saying education and training of your ongoing staff. And so we are a major employer.
Have them recommend. Part of the scope is them recommend.
Maybe the flaw is, and then an internal flaw, that we don't ever have this conversation inside one of the area's largest employers.
Yeah, I would be open, open to that. I mean, I think part of what I have a question too is what's the report and deliverables. And so if, if one of those deliverables is give us a recommendation of, of training and, and, you know, best practices that we need to adopt, I would be open to that if that's a, if that's another carve out. Um, because ultimately that's, you know, you get, you're worried hiring just consultants, okay? So there's been some, some good work that consultants do, and we can hold those up and say they're awesome. But there's a bunch that you just sit in these drawers.
And go nowhere.
And go nowhere. And so I, I think having a very defined scope, um, I think will give you, you know, defined deliverables that you're expecting will hopefully match your experience. That, that's what I hope. And so I, I would be in favor of having training and recommendation of training and best practices be part of their deliverables along with how we do services, boards and commissions, contract spending processes. That's kind of my list. So.
I'm agreeable to that. Pretty much has all the aspects covered, I think.
And then generally, you're thinking this deliverable report would be by June?
Yep. And one of the things that I included in here, um, as well, is, um, asking the consultant to help us design, um, tools and modern, uh, monitoring techniques. Again, so it doesn't just get set on the shelf, that we, you know, we don't start this program up. This has to be a very dynamic program. It, it's not we're done June thirtieth. It's how do we continue to hold ourselves accountable? Um, you know, if we need to continue to develop this, I anticipate this not to be done on June thirtieth. So I would like to make sure we have some accountability and, and the consultant helps us develop those systems to be held accountable.
You tell them the report and deliverables on June thirtieth, and then that's up to you to implement what's written in there.
Yep.
And, you know, learn from their advice and counsel. That's what you're paying for.
Yep.
And you may see some way forward even, you may need budget money that you'll know when we start into January and February.
Correct.
You'll begin to see this process of putting together the scope. These are big steps for us, that we've got something that's concrete to begin the conversation. And I would encourage you to work with the individuals that we just assigned to the EOC committee. Um, I appreciate the persistence of Mikhail Jackson in remaining on that committee. He's been on that committee so long that his term actually ended and he had to be reappointed. So.
What? From the dollar amounts, you said ten and then you said fifteen. So what do we, what's the requirement?
So it'd be twenty-five, it'd be twenty-five thousand total.
Five thousand?
Um, I have ten currently in my budget that would be available for it.
Saltines aren't cheap, are they?
It sounds like we have consensus. Do you want to come back?
Are you trying to cut me off here? I'm just, I'm not done. So unless, unless you two want to say we're done, then we are.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, twenty, twenty-five thousand sounds high. So I was, my original thought was fifteen that you had, and maybe I wasn't reading and putting the ten and fifteen together. And so my, my bad. Um, I mean, does the board want to spend twenty-five thousand on it? I, I guess I was coming in at fifteen, and so that surprised me.
Is it okay if I talk now? So my comment to Dawn would be that you're my HR director, and I normally go to you and say, what's it going to take? What's the cost? I'm going to defer to you.
I get, I get that, because you, you never talk to me. Um, I get that. But we make the decisions. So that's why I'm looking at both of you for that decision. I've asked Dawn her recommendation, twenty-five. I'd like to appropriate fifteen. That would be my proposal.
I would support Dawn's position. What would you like to do, Harley?
I would support Dawn's position. I think this is something that we really do have to, uh, look into to make sure we're doing right. I know it's a little pricey, uh, but I think we do have to get this right. Uh, so I.
Awesome.
Thanks for bringing this.
Thank you. And you will see a contract once we go through the, the RFP process and it will result in a contract that will be for your consideration.
And we haven't taken formal action. So if you think there's something that's necessary, you'll bring that to us next week?
No, we would go through the request for a proposal first.
Okay.
So this will be, yep, in the, in the coming months to have that contract.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. The final item on our agenda is if there are any, um, boards and commissions updates. Put out to my colleagues, the RTA meeting this week has been canceled.
Yes.
So there's no meeting Wednesday morning. Um, do either, um, I have other things, but do you have things you want to report on or point out?
Uh, I think the last time we had an update was a while ago. There's a lot going on. Um, as I said, it's out at the Field of Dreams for their, uh, press release event with, uh, Frank Thomas, the Big Hurt, and his, uh, partner that are taking over, uh, majority control. Uh, Kennedy Mall had a fifty year anniversary. J was actually had both of these. Uh, Bernard Fire Breakfast Sunday morning was excellent. Worthington Steak Friday last Sunday night, that was really good. That was impressive. Nine hundred steaks they served.
Nine hundred?
Nine hundred. Whoa, it was pretty good. Uh, Landfill has a ribbon cutting for the gas plant on the fourteenth from ten to noon. The gas plant, uh, thing is completed now and, uh, going into production.
That's on the fourteenth at noon.
Fourteenth at ten AM at, uh, gas plant out there at Landfill. Uh, the DRA has an open house October twelfth for the new outdoor, uh, dining and seating area that opened up at Hula Hands. They have a really nice area there.
Got a flyer on that.
Yep. Uh.
Money from the casino.
Yeah, the conference board meeting, which obviously Anne couldn't talk about that one. And that's really about it for me.
Did you have anything Supervisor Witten?
I do not. I do not.
Just a couple of other things. It will be on our agenda for next week, but there was a UCC meeting, and I think you were.
Yeah, I was.
On listening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there, there's going to be, um, the priorities, a draft of that for the legislative priorities that'll come out. It should be received tomorrow. Um, my feedback on that, you heard my feedback about, they wanted to put in something about some mandate language and said we have a divided board. It was my thought, we should not do that as a legislative priority. I was not alone in that. I joined other colleagues. So if you have feedback when you see the proposals, next Monday will be our opportunity to discuss that. But, um, we always seem to be out of step or behind with all the other counties. They meet more frequently than we do even. Um, the Eastern Regional Governing Board did meet and, um, we, they did approve our Fund Ten Balance project for, uh, the Community Foundation that was, that was received and approved. Um, other counties are doing interesting things, um, thinking outside the box, really looking for unique, so funding for mentoring that was accomplished by, I think Benton County. So people are thinking about brain health in a way that is beyond therapy. It's connecting with people who are in trouble and building in resources, other than maybe what we think of as traditional, um, therapy or people who provide therapy. So these fund balance dollars appear to be an opportunity to expand to meet the needs in your community more broadly based than just, um, therapy itself. So, uh, the conference board, we did, um, successfully reappoint our county assessor, Billy Selby, to a complete term. So I've done the paperwork to move that on to the Department of Revenue. Attended children's brain health meeting as a stakeholder with the Community Foundation. And I think probably the last thing of note is that Greater Dubuque, um, which I sit on their executive committee and their board directors as an assignment from us all, they are engaged in, um, strategic planning and priority setting, and they're going to be kicking off a campaign. And, uh, DEI was definitely a topic of conversation there in terms of, um, to change our workforce and meet workforce needs, looking at the kind of community that we are and are there any other things that we've made a priority? So, um, that concludes my report from what I have done. Um, obviously there are other things, but I don't think you want to walk around in my back pocket necessarily. Um, so as we conclude today, we want to make note that we will meet here at four o'clock on Thursday for the canvas of the vote. The city's election is tomorrow. Thank you to the auditor for conducting the election safely, correct, around the corner. And, yeah, of course, and your staff. So tremendous work. And then everyone will be at their polling station tomorrow. Will there be voting here tomorrow? There'll be no voting here tomorrow. Everyone must go to their polling station. And then we have, the warehouse has an open door. The annex is open for one day only. Is that right?
No.
Nope. Just polling stations.
No, it's under.
Right? Just go to your polling station tomorrow, and we'll meet here on Thursday. So the motion I'm looking for is one to recess until Thursday.
Go move. Second that.
Motion is second to recess until Thursday at four o'clock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, everyone who's participated today.
Thank you, Anne.